We'll call this meeting back to order. Roll call.
Ms. Foote?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills? Absent. Mr. Puniet?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here. At this time, we will stand for our flag salute. And I'll ask Mr. Puniet if he would please lead us.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Our invocation this evening will be presented by Reverend Mike Coppersmith of Our Savior's Community Church. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Shall we pray together? Lord God, thank you for this city we call Palm Springs and for we its people, all of its people, who are this city. Thank you for the leaders and staff of our city and for the many sacrifices they make for our community. Grant to our council members rich measures of your wisdom, your favor, your justice, your love in their deliberations and decisions this evening. God, you know even better than us that in so many ways we are a diverse city. Help us to acknowledge you and to always treat our fellow citizens with love and with sensitivity so that in our time, we might see the fulfillment of our nation's motto, e pluribus unum, out of many, one. By your grace, enable us to love each other and give ourselves for the betterment of our city, even as you loved us and gave yourself for us. Amen.
Amen, and thank you. This evening, we have a presentation, a certificate of recognition to Milgard Manufacturing. I'm going to ask if Councilmember Puniet would take the lead on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure this evening to present a certificate of recognition award to Milgard Manufacturing. For the past few years, Milgard Manufacturing of Tacoma, Washington, has been conducting their company-wide senior managers' corporate training meetings right here in the desert. In conjunction with the training, Milgard, through its Milgard Community Action Team, their volunteers, they also give back to the communities which they have a presence. Milgard has previously helped Episcopal Community Services, ECS, with community service projects and contacted them, and we contacted them again this year. In turn, ECS approached the city to permit the repainting of the RG Frye JC Building's interior and exterior. ECS has joined with the Well in the Desert in their weekday afternoon hot lunch feeding program to offer comprehensive client case management via the new Desert Resource Center. The city graciously accepted the community service offer, giving the building a needed facelift. On the afternoon of January 15th, ninety-plus Milgard executives and plant managers arrived in two buses at the Frye JC Building, wearing red T-shirts that read, "Because We Care." Armed and ready to scrap and paint, the company provided the materials, supplies, and 250 gallons of paint as well. In no time at all, the building shined with a new coat of paint. Now in appreciation for their service to the city and our community, we would like to recognize Milgard Manufacturing tonight. Representing Milgard is Mark Malkatell, Director of Finance and Controller from their corporate headquarters, and Carol Milgard, spouse of Milgard founder Gary Milgard, who was right there day painting as well. Please join me in thanking Milgard Manufacturing. And could Mark and Carol please come up?
Well, thanks very much. And we are a resident of Palm, not Palm Springs, but out by Palm Desert for about three months out of the year. But you know, I wanted to hope that this will interest other, you know, companies and stuff to do work in their communities at home. We have started MG Cat, which is Matching Gift Community Action Team, where we match dollar-for-dollar every donation that our employees make. And part of this is due to the fact that I, when we started this, we wanted our employees not only to know how to give money, but to give time. Because I have to tell you something, my generation is getting older and tired. And so, we are trying to bring up our younger folks into doing this. So I will just share one little statistic with you. Last year, we had over 6,000 volunteers from east to west coast, and we turned, donated cash-wise about $350,000, and that didn't include any of the in-kind gifts. And while we were down here, Mark has headed this whole program up for Palm Springs for the last two years. We also donated new windows to the Boys and Girls Clubs in India. So hopefully, that will help your community, and hopefully, we can instigate the rest of you to get out and help us. Thank you.
Report of the posting of the agenda, City Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The agenda you had before you was posted last Friday, March 7th, or whatever last Friday was. You do have some additional materials in front of you in your yellow folders. Those items are concerning item CRA A, item 9, item 23, and item 28. So that's additional materials for consideration, CRA A, 9, 23, 28. And the executive director is withdrawing item CRA C. That would be CRA C, is being withdrawn.
Would you repeat those that are being withdrawn again?
The only one being withdrawn is CRA C, but you have additional materials for CRA A, 9, 23, and 28.
Okay. Report of the closed session.
Yes, the agency and the city council met in closed session. Items on the agenda, the item involving VIP Motors and real property negotiations was not discussed. We did discuss real property negotiations with Gabe concerning the dump site. That matter is on your agenda tonight for public action. Concerning the listed item for Sunrise Hacienda Partners, that item was not discussed. The Swank Project Golf Course Hotel was not discussed. The Casper Project was not discussed. The airline leases, we gave a status report on the renegotiation of the airline leases. Direction was given for continued negotiations. Litigation matters, the lawsuit involving the Prairie Schooner Parcel was not discussed. The, for the city, real property negotiations with Desert Water Agency, we gave a status report. Direction was given for further negotiations. With respect to the Burr Group negotiations for, at the 19th Avenue and McLean, gave a status report. Direction was given for further negotiations. With respect to the real property negotiations over the boxing club location, we gave a status report. Direction was given for further negotiations. Concerning the Catherine Finchey School Site, Desert Healthcare District gave a status report. Direction was given for continued negotiations. Concerning the Palm Springs Town Homes Project, Murray Canyon, that was not discussed. The Stitch negotiations were not discussed. Concerning litigation matters, there were two matters of exposure to litigation. We gave a status report. No action was taken. We did not discuss the initiation of negotiations and did not discuss the city attorney evaluation.
Thanks. Thank you. The Housing Authority, the Finance and Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, tonight, they have no business, and we will move to the Community Redevelopment Agency. We'll move to public comments under the Community Redevelopment Agency. I have a number of cards, and those are people who wish to speak on items 1A, B, or D, or E. And the card, first card that I have is Cheryl Hamlin, followed by Elisa Goldforth. Elisa, I'm sorry. Good evening and welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Cheryl Hamlin. I'm a resident of the Historic Tennis Club neighborhood, and I'm here to talk about the Winters property, and in particular, its relationship to the city of Palm Springs. I have here in my hand a document someone gave me recently about potential tax increases that are being considered for bridging the gap between our revenue and expenditures. Fifty cents on a ticket, a dollar on a 9/11, $100 in a parcel tax. With these kind of draconian measures, I really question the financial validity of loaning the redevelopment agency 400 and some odd thousand, almost 500,000, from the Palm Springs General Fund. It doesn't make sense in light of a $3 million deficit. Second of all, this is a historic structure, and I believe we should start from this day forth, treasuring our historic structures. On the plate right now, we have the Oasis Hotel, a Lloyd Wright building that's scheduled for demolition. We have a 1927 Craftsman on Barista that Mr. Westman is planning to destroy. We have the Racket Club, the realtor is pitching it for demolition, hundreds more. Let's think about this building in its context and not let it become simply fodder for more coffee table books. But let's keep the building in its pristine state, and no one else but Casa Cody is qualified to preserve it nail by nail, as they have so lovingly preserved Casa Cody. And they can bring this online and start generating COT tax. Mr. Mayor, I urge you to think about the campaign commercial I heard you air the last week of your election, where you talked about preservation. It's time to start preserving tonight this building and vote no on acquiring this for the Redevelopment Agency. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, if I may, before all the speakers on this item of the RDA speak, there was a request to move this item to next week. That item was, that was requested by Councilmember Mills, who could not be with us this evening, and I just want to let you know that was a request to move for one week.
And you are right, and I forgot all about it, but we're into it now, so, yeah. Yes, Ms. Goldforth.
Yes, I'm Elisa Goldforth. I am the resident manager of Casa Cody. Needless to say, my feelings about this should be evident. I am here this evening to read a letter from Bob and Judy Hebling on South, who reside on South Potencio Road, and who are investors and homeowners here in the Palm Springs area. Regarding, as owners and residents of the property in the Historic Tennis Club area, we wish to make our joint opinion known to each and all of you addressed. As visitors for many years in Palm Springs, and after sampling many of the wonderful and not-so-wonderful historic ends in the area, we became loyal and frequent visitors of Casa Cody, surely one of the most beautifully maintained and restored old properties in the area. As a result of our frequent visits and extended stays at the Cody, we purchased a home in the Historic Tennis Club area on South Potencio. On one of the stays at Casa Cody, uh, as a, okay. On one of the stays at the original house, we purchased a home in the Historic Tennis Club District on the original horse ranch lot subdivided in 1942. We are in the process of developing plans to completely refurbish and improve the site. We also purchased a second home in Little Tuscany on Chino Canyon Road, next to the Elvis Presley House. Now it seems both of these wonderful areas have become threatened by progress. When we heard that the old Winters property had gone into escrow and would be added to Casa Cody, we were so happy to see the property would be in the hands of owners, sensitive to the history and culture of this very unique and precious area of our city. Then to our dismay, we read about the proposed Westman involvement and proposed acquisition by the city of Palm Springs of the site, and we were and still are appalled at what we read. Please, please do not go down that path. The seller and buyer had agreed to a sale, and the buyer is known for his sensitivity to historic property and his business success, AKA revenues to the city. Let them be, please. Stay out of this deal and put the city's revenues and efforts to better use. The Winters property is not architecturally demanding, nor do people come here specifically to see it, but that does not diminish it as an essential part of a greater whole which comprises our historical district, a district which we should go to great lengths to preserve. Do as we have done many times. Go spend a night in the old adobe at Casa Cody, and then ask yourself if we would have been better off if the owners had sold it to John Westman to develop. Go to Peabody's for early morning curbside coffee and look across at the old oasis property. Look at that elegant little campanile and take time to listen to it play one of its tunes for passersby. Try to imagine what the oasis storefronts would be like if they had been preserved in their 1940 style, rather than having been neutralized with ho-hum '70 storefronts. Then more importantly, open one of the many books which show the oasis as it used to be, and try to imagine what it would look like if it was still there. Our city needs to keep increasing its revenue stream. We all get that.
I'm going to have to ask you to come to a close.
Okay, all right. Let Frank and Casa Cody do what they do so well, preserve and flourish. The city will gain the revenues, the property will continue to attract tourists, quality tourists, and we will all win.
Thank you. We have a lot of people here tonight. So I'm going to ask everyone to please stay within your three-minute time. Marshall Roth. Marshall, followed by Therese Hayes. Good evening and welcome, and you'll have three minutes. And we have so many people want to speak, I'm going to adhere to that three-minute rule. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Marshall Roth, and I'm a resident of the tennis club, and I am president of the Historic Tennis Club Neighborhood Organization. And last night, we had our monthly board meeting, and the board voted unanimously, that is, ten members, to direct me to read this statement to the, to the council regarding the Winters property. "We, the Historic Tennis Club Neighborhood Organization, who live in the historic epicenter of Palm Springs, believe we share a common objective with our city leaders to preserve and enhance our appeal as a destination for visitors, commerce, and residents. We believe this appeal is grounded in our friendly and approachable village atmosphere. We believe that when options exist, development should be led by private sector, particularly the small businesses and individual homeowners. The distinctiveness and appeal of Palm Springs is overwhelmingly due to the efforts of this sector, and it remains our best hope for our joint future. For in addition to the preservation of our, of our appeal, such an approach is of great advantage to the financial health of the city. Finally, we believe that at no time should our city government exercise its bully power over the private sector, or to preempt the private sector, or to unnecessarily raise barriers and costs to the private sector. On the basis of these principles, we are dismayed at the city's interference with private development of the Winters property and urge reconsideration of this misguided attempt to favor government action and ownership over private sector. It is an inappropriate use of public funds and pits the city against its own residents and taxpayers. We have need for your leadership in so many areas where private solutions have not yet emerged. It makes no sense to interrupt the private sector and the growth of our tax base. Thank you."
Thank you. Ms. Hayes? Followed by Lori Eyrely, then Craig Ball. Good evening. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Therese Hayes. I am co-owner of Casa Cody. Mrs. Winter fought the redevelopment agency in the 1980s and saved a large part of the tennis club area, which has now become famous for its small hotels and relaxed properties. For the past several years, she has turned down offers from developers, wanting to preserve the character and grounds of one of the few original 1930s houses left. She feels that the Casa Cody is the most qualified buyer. We have painstakingly restored a turn-of-the-century adobe, trying to keep it as authentic as possible, and we had similar plans for this property. Left untouched for many years, it needs sensitive restoration. It has no heat, no air conditioning. The woodwork is in bad need of repair. We were due to close escrow on February 1st and had financing as well as a crew lined up. The city would now start collecting room tax. The Winter House, an original Spanish, an example of Palm Springs getaway before pools, fast food chains, and shopping centers. Wouldn't it be better off, I'm sorry, would not we be better off with the original Desert Inn, if any of us remember, rather than a fashion plaza, which has become an expensive embarrassment? We can ask our guests. We should now have charming boutiques downtown and revenues from shopping. Once a historical building changes character, it is gone and gone forever. So many have been lost to date that it would be criminal to lose another. The Casa Cody is popular because it has spacious grounds and a low-key relaxed atmosphere. While we may refer guests to other hotels, the room rate requested is always under $200 a night. A boutique hotel at a busy corner, facing a parking lot with a dense two-story urban construction has little chance of success. I certainly would not invest in it. And when did the city go into the real estate business and speculation? Taking a property from one owner to benefit another seems to be a questionable practice. We do not intend to resell this house, but to use it as an integral part of Casa Cody for our guests, as well as making it available for public functions. It is about making Palm Springs a better place to live in. Mrs. Winter wants us to preserve this house. Mrs. Winter wants us to preserve this house. The city and neighborhood would benefit, and we intend, one way or another, to continue her legacy and ensure that the house, including interiors, as well as the grounds, are to be maintained and promptly restored to their original condition and style. Adding a pool would alter the character of the ground and be in violation of escrow. Thank you.
Ms. Eierle, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lori Eierle, and I live here in Palm Springs. The reason I'm here tonight is to express my objection to the council's actions in preventing the sale of the Winter property to Frank Tyson. And like Will Rogers, all I know is what I read in the papers. I have never met Mr. Tyson, and he doesn't know me from Adam's House Cat. But I did call him this morning to ask if he felt it appropriate for me to speak about his problem. First, a little history. About 20 years ago, when the city decided to use the doctrine of eminent domain to bulldoze Bolardo, Mrs. Winter, standing squarely in their path, made such a brouhaha, they were forced to back down. Today, Bolardo, with its charming inns, is looked upon as an historic area, an area all of us are proud of. Unfortunately, in order to have Mrs. Winter call off her dogs, the city had her right in agreement to give it, the city, right of first refusal. At the same time, Mrs. Winter expressed, in no uncertain terms, that she wanted Mr. Tyson to have the property, since he promised faithfully to preserve it exactly as it is, which is why she accepted his offer to buy the property last year. But our city council stepped in before the sale was consummated, referring to that long-ago clause to stop the procedure. And I want to know why. If this is being done under the banner of "business-friendly", then I have to ask, "Business-friendly" to whom? To developers? Don't we owe primary consideration to our local merchants and businesses who have stuck with this city, maintained and developed their investments through the very rough years, as well as these relatively plush times? And who needs a boutique hotel on a Bolardo, anyway? If Mr. Westman wants to build one, why doesn't he use part of his Fashion Plaza property to do it? If he ju... Wait, I only have three minutes. If he just took a portion of the parking lot at the corner of Takwitz and Bolardo and turned that into a beautiful hotel, location-wise, he'd be sitting in the catbird seat. A short block from Palm Canyon, across from the museum, Valerius, and the new housing going up. Now there's a location. But instead, that entire property has been allowed to lie fallow and become a major eyesore on our main street. Waiting for what? Please, council, don't do this.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that we refrain from the responses, or we're going to be here all night. We have a lot to go through. Good evening, Mr. Blau, and welcome.
Thank you. I just got a quick point. I... my name is Craig Blau. I own the Chase Hotel, which is immediately adjacent between Bolardo and Coia on Arenas, right by Casa Cody. And I just think there's a real simple economic point that I'm surprised is kind of being overlooked, is there hasn't been an analysis of what kind of income the city gets from a moderate-priced hotel like myself or Casa Cody, as opposed to the type of luxury property that is being proposed for... to be included in this deal. And I do a very simple analysis of driving around every evening on my way home and do the parking lot count. I'm certain that the city would be a lot better off putting that property to work under Casa Cody and creating a TOT income immediately. I did happen to call the city finance director today, and evidently, no one has ever brought that up to them. And I would urge the council to at least examine that a little more closely before making any kind of decision, but I think the decision's obvious. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Brewster, followed by Douglas Smith. Good evening, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Judy Bernstein, and Mayor Oden and distinguished council members. I'm reading this letter in behalf of 49 people that have signed this letter. We are writing with regard to the property at 141 South Coia, known as the Winter House. We have learned recently from outraged friends in Palm Springs residents that the city, having first refusal on the property, intends to borrow money to buy it and then sell it to another developer. Notwithstanding the fact that the property's owner, Mrs. Winter, has been in negotiations with the owners of the property adjacent to hers, Casa Cody, for some time. We understand that Mrs. Winter would like Casa Cody to have the property if the city does not intend to keep it for the citizens of Palm Springs, because she believes they will be the only ones who will keep it as it is. As the taxpayers of this city, we do not believe that the taxpayer's money, borrowed at that, should be used to enter into real estate transactions. Surely, when Mrs. Winter gave first refusal to the city many years ago, the intent was for it to be kept for the citizens of Palm Springs and not for the business of real estate transactions. The city not being in the business, nor should it be. We would guess that if the city does not intend to buy the property and keep it, it would lose its right of first refusal. Secondly, the city should not favor one taxpayer over another taxpayer. If the city does not have any practical use for the property, it should not interfere with Mrs. Winter's pending sale of it. The first two reasons we have given for opposing the transaction, important as they may be, because justice is involved, does not overshadow our third reason. We have seen the integrity of the owners of Casa Cody in the renovation of the properties they already own. They have kept their hotel in character with Palm Springs aesthetic and its history. Palm Springs still stands out from the rest of the valley, but in recent times, we have seen too many developments, some involving the city, that for money is chipping away at the city's soul. We urge you not to interfere with Mrs. Winter's sale of the property. I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, good evening and welcome. You'll have three minutes.
I'm Doug Smith. I own Caracia Hotel in the tennis club area. I'm not much of a public speaker, so forgive me. I might be a little bit disjointed. There's a number of issues here that are sort of being skirted over. I'm listening, and I'm hearing this sort of cast out of these quaint little historic inns, and I can sort of imagine the council thinking, "Well, isn't that sweet, but we have big development, we've got big plans." You're missing the point. I can remember in 1994, when Will Kleindicht held up the Conde Nast Traveler magazine that was written at my hotel. It said, "Palm Springs is hip again", and said, "This is outlandish. What are we going to do about it? How can they be saying these things about us?" It is the small hotels in Palm Springs of all types and all over, not just historic, that have brought Palm Springs back again. I'm going to say a couple of things about my hotel, not to be bragging, but it is an economic base, too, that gets forgotten. My hotel generates close to $150,000 a year in TOTs. Take 10 hotels in the tennis club, that's a million dollars. I'd like the council to talk to me about what small hotel has been funded by the city or backed by the city during any of this time period? Nothing. Will Kleindicht came... my hotel's been there for 12 years. He came to my hotel once and talked about... and I feel free to do this, because Will's not here. Talked to me about bicycle factories down valley, enterprise zones. The Versace stay at my hotel. The owner of the New York Times stays at my hotel. Every fashion shoot... in fact, I did a count, which I... again, this is not meant to be bragging, this is an economic point. Over 900 articles have been written, national articles, and television have been written on my hotel alone. This is the genesis of what made Palm Springs start to click and move again. In 1990, there was really only two hotels in the tennis club area that were doing anything, the Ingleside Inn and the Casa Cody. Casa Cody, under Frank Tyson and Therese Hayes, let me sit at their desk and learn how to run a hotel. They've sponsored every small hotel and backed them and filled the rooms until they got known. Now, the other thing that will come up quickly is that you'll think I don't like John Westman. I stood up for John Westman and his development on Lugo. He needs to be there, it's a dead property, and I went... and it's going to drive me crazy with the construction noise for the next 10 months. I also told John Westman, he doesn't know how to run a hotel on that corner, and he's probably going to lose money. He's going to bring an outside operator in. That's not what made Palm Springs successful. So I think the city should really rethink and cast its vote with the soul and spirit of what Palm Springs is about. And I think that really, both men, Westman and Tyson, are the spirit of Palm Springs, but Tyson is the soul and spirit that needs to be backed. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who would like to speak to this community redevelopment agency, please come forward at this time. Don't have any more cards, please give your name to the clerk. And you'll have three minutes. Good evening, Ms. Jones.
Evening, City Council and staff. I was waiting in line... waiting there to... for all the people that were going to vote in favor of handing this over to Mr. Westman. But I guess there isn't anybody that's in support of that. So, anyway. So here to speak on Item A, Francis Winter's Single Family Historic House. Mr. Tyson, a small-business owner and the owner of Casa Cody, was in escrow to purchase the Winters property. He planned to add this historic property to his adjoining historic hotel, and preserve and maintain it, and at his own expense, and without assistance. Like Doug said previously, I don't think there's been any assistance to any of these boutique hotels at all, ever. Mr. Tyson has a record of going overboard in his maintenance and restoring of historical property. We are very fortunate to have such people in Palm Springs. However, the city doesn't appear to want that to happen. And according to the backup material provided by the city, the RDA, Redevelopment Agency, has stepped in on Mr. Westman's behalf to purchase the property. Let's call it, it's really eminent domain we're doing here. So here we have the city taking a property from one private owner and transferring it, or with the intent of transferring it, to another private owner. It even says in the backup material that Westman plans to build a boutique hotel, sort of a pie-in-the-sky thing, really, in direct competition with Casa Cody, for God's sake. That doesn't sound much like free enterprise and the market economy to me, which is really what we're supposed to all be about. Now, how about just doing the right thing on this? Instead of, you know, having all these people having to come down here like this. In the past, the city, nor Mr. Westman, do not have a good track record in preserving historic properties. Those of us who have lived here a while remember when the city attempted to demolish the Wellwood Murray Library to assist Mr. Westman. Fortunately for Palm Springs, city lost that in court at great expense, and the Wellwood Murray Libraries is still there. On top of all this, the RDA has no cash in hand, I told that Frank months ago, to purchase this property, having... they've lost... either lost it all, or they've given it away. And they're now going to have to bar... borrowing $425,000 from the general fund at a time when the city is considering hiring, the last council mentor, some spin doctors to sell the citizens a tax increase that obviously is not needed, if we can just come up with $425,000 here. Ironically, Item D, on the same agenda, is a payment to VIP Motors of $60,000, which is part of a million dollars that we're giving to VIP Motors.
I have to ask you to come to a close.
Okay, fine, okay, I'll come to a close.
Your time is over.
So what Frank needs is some equal justice here, which is what obviously a lot of people here are tonight for on another item.
Thank you. If there's someone else who would like to speak to on this issue, please come forward. Yes. Please give your name to the clerk, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Joni Forre. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband and I. Now, we own La Bella Villas, which is boutique bed and bike next to Casa Cody. And I would like to concur with Doug from Caracia and all the other people who have spoken tonight in favor of Frank having this property. I do believe that Mr. Westman has some other great things going on in our neighborhood, and we should just let Mr. Tyson take this property.
Thank you. Then at this time, we will close the public comments. Well, I've been... I just called for public comments several times, but I'm going to let you speak. But while you're out there, you should be up here focusing. Thank you, you all have three minutes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I stand corrected. The Winter House issue is all about vision for Palm Springs. Our vision, our vision includes the uniqueness and charm. And ironically, these are often the things that people do for love rather than for money. Palm Springs Playhouse, Morton Botanic Gardens, many of the small inns. Palm Springs needs them, especially in these days of all this big development. And we're losing our character otherwise. We have very hard... we've been working very hard to try to preserve the first half of the 1900s. And so we thought, when we had the opportunity to expand, the city would receive it open arms. And it's kind of disheartening to have to do battle. We understand about visions of more bed techs next door, but as some of the speakers already pointed out, 30 crowded units in the corner, it's hard to collect between $300 and $600 a night for. And many of the owners of the other small, high-end establishments have already confided in us about vacancy problems. What works in Palm Springs is the inns that are more reasonable. We are... we feel upset that the city has no firm plans, no market analysis, just idle promises, and that they would respect the... reject the expansion plans of an established business. There's also been no consultation. The neighborhood already can see the traffic problems on that corner, height and density, not to speak of a planned underground garage. I see all kinds of economic problems. I see all kinds of environmental problems. I see all kinds of preservation problems. And we don't need any more problems in this city. We just had an uproar about eminent domain. And a citizen advisory committee to the council voted to nix eminent domain for residential areas. In a sense, it's in this delayed eminent domain. And shouldn't we really help... should the city be intervening? And many people have already spoken about that in a... in the previous period of time. We just hope that you're going to be small-business friendly. We have a track record. We don't delay projects for years, and we will perform. We have an accepted offer. We paid more than the established appraisal value. Please let us go ahead. We feel the community is with us, and we are even prepared to have it put to a vote of the people, if you so desire. But I hope that with three new people on the council and our hopes of having not business as usual, that you have the wisdom to go with us. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's try this again. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the Community Redevelopment Agency? If not, then we will close public comments at this time. Thank you. We'll move to approval of the minutes. It's before A.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, the minutes are for December 3rd, 17th, and February 18th. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pungay. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Well, then McCullough. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it is carried unanimously. And we'll move to our legislative items. Agenda item A. Property purchased Francis Winter, 141 South Coia Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to know two things. One, there's a companion piece to this item on the legislative calendar of council, which is Number 21. which is number 21. So, the action the council takes here obviously will have, uh, an effect on that companion resolution. Second, Mayor, I did note that Councilmember Mills had requested that this piece postponed for one week in his absence. Uh, staff report, I would ask Mr. Raymond to come to the podium and give a brief staff report. This is on the right of refusal, um, this is the agency action only. John, thank you.
I had also requested that this item be postponed, because I had some further questions that I, that I don't think, believe staff was, has prepared for us at this point.
Um, okay, I, I know that we had had that request, but I was unaware that we had more than one request, and it was my plan to acknowledge that request from the very beginning, but once we started, it was no way to, to stop the process. I guess what we can do is go through the staff report, and then let council decide at that point whether or not we, um, unless legal has a different take.
Uh, the mayor is chairman of the meeting, and your determination is how we would proceed.
Okay, then we'll have our staff report, since we've gone through so much tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, the action before you is an approval of the, uh, the purchase of the Francis Winter property at, uh, 141 South Correa, and then, as Mr. Reddy said, uh, there's a companion piece, which is the loan agreement between the city and the agency. Um, the, uh, you've heard a lot of history already, um, and I'll be very, very brief, but the agency has had a, uh, as part of a settlement agreement, a right of first refusal to acquire the property since 1988, um, whereby if Mrs. Winter chose to sell the property to a third party, uh, they'd have to notify the, uh, the agency that they intended to do so. Uh, they opened an escrow in December with, uh, Ms. Hayes and Mr. Tyson, and notified the agency, and, uh, we discussed it, and, uh, uh, staff is now bringing forward the, the action for approval, um, of, of actually exercising the right of first refusal, opening the escrow, and actually acquiring the property. Um, there is, um, I know that there is one question related to the facilitating the boutique hotel. We have been talking to Mr. Westman since at least the year 2000 about that corner at Correa and Tocuits, about developing a boutique hotel. That's when he first started asking if we would help him acquire the Winter property. We said we couldn't, um, uh, but if she ever decided to sell, uh, that they would have to notify us, and that's, that's, uh, whereby we, we, uh, discussed with him at that time. Um, the, uh, the, one thing on the, uh, is, as part of the settlement agreement, we have to agree, uh, that if we are matching the offer from the third party, that we have to comply with the same terms and provisions that are in that escrow. There is language in the escrow that the, uh, that the buyer agrees to preserve and maintain, uh, the property essentially in the same condition, and that they would also apply sometime within the ten-year period for historic designation of the property. It's on, it was on the 1980 county historic survey, and it was on a more recent historic survey, and, and so, it potentially is eligible for historic listing. So the agency, uh, would have to, uh, comply with that through, through the escrow and on the deed, and that, uh, therefore, once it's on the deed, uh, when it, when it's sold to, uh, another party, um, that provision would run, you know, run with the land. So, it, uh, we do not believe that the property is in danger of being torn down. Um, the issue is, is that, um, we, you know, we discussed with Mr. Tyson, he would get, um, he certainly would be able to successfully incorporate it in Casa Cody, it gives him a nice big open lawn, he could do weddings, uh, there, you know, there's, um, you know, other sort of outside events, he'd get probably four more rooms, maybe more. Um, and the issue that we were weighing is that, uh, on a, uh, on a piece next door that's over an acre, uh, you would potentially get, uh, 30 more rooms, and even if they were at the same price point, the incremental difference in number of rooms at Casa Cody was four, probably, you know, possibly, and the incremental difference in facilitating the development of a hotel on the other site was perhaps 30 or 35. And so that was the, uh, that was the analysis, uh, some of the rough financial analysis that we provided to you, uh, back in January. So, uh, the recommendation is to proceed with the, uh, with the opening of the escrow and the, the purchase of the property, but certainly, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, are there any questions on the staff report?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like the record to show that I had requested this item be postponed, and that you denied that without a discussion or a vote of council. Just want the record to show.
Mr. McCullough, I've not denied that. I was just going through the staff report. We've already started this process, so we may still pull for the vote. Did you have, were there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this, have we, if the city, if we're considering purchasing a piece of property, have we done, have we have, do we have an appraisal of what the value of the property is?
Uh, we have not appraised it. You know, the, uh, the terms of the settlement agreement are that we have to match the offer. If the appraisal came back and it was 385, that, uh, we couldn't offer 385 per the settlement agreement. Uh, certainly if it came back for more, you would not need to buy it for more. Um, you only have to match the offer.
The staff is recommending that we purchase, the city council make a decision to purchase property, and we have not done an appraisal of the property.
If I could just note, first of all, um, it's, it's not, it, just for clarification, the staff doesn't have a recommendation in this one way, or this was direction we had to bring this, this forward. Uh, the second of all, the appraisal, now, John, the councilman raises a very good point, it doesn't make sense we would even purchase a property without an appraisal. Uh, we're precluded from that at this point. Now, if we were to turn around and resell it, in theory, we could do an appraisal because the, it, the value may be higher, so we can't buy it at any higher, but we could sell it at higher. So an appraisal would be appropriate after the fact.
We're precluded from doing an appraisal? We cannot do an appraisal, Mr. City Attorney?
No, no, we, we can do an appraisal, councilman, it's just that it wouldn't affect this transaction.
It would affect the transaction if it appraised at $100,000, in my opinion, and we're buying it for $425,000.
Uh, the council, the agency is of course free to do an appraisal. The issue is that irrespective of whatever that appraisal concluded, in order to utilize your, your election right, under your first, your opportunity to, uh, first refusal, you have to go with the price that has already been established.
I understand that, but that, to me, that's two separate issues.
No.
There also is a little bit of a timing issue in terms of doing an appraisal, because of the fact that, uh, you'd have to hire the appraiser, we'd probably take the appraiser thirty-eight to do the appraisal. We were required to send a letter, uh, electing whether we wanted to proceed with this matter, which was done. Nevertheless, obviously, it's before the council, the agency tonight, and you could give whatever direction you wanted.
And what is the, um, the, when does the council have to make a decision? There must be a timeframe from tonight forward to where, when we, for those of you who don't know, the council already considered this in closed session, and it was, it was, it was reported out to, in, in public session, that there was a 3-2 vote on this issue, and, so the council majority has already decided to go ahead and exercise the option. Now, what will happen is there'll be several steps that will come back to us, and when, when we actually have to move money around, or, 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 or actually formalize this. So that's, maybe, that might help clarify for some people who aren't aware of the question, why the questions are being asked.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pugnay.
It was my understanding as a result of the last meeting, a question to staff, is that we would be brought back a financial analysis of point A or point B. Um, so that's where I feel we left the last meeting.
And, as the city attorney said, we had a timeframe in which to respond as the, as the group that had the first right of refusal. Either we refuse to act on that, or we have to act based upon the proposal that's been made. So there's no way of getting around that fact. Now, what was given was staff direction to bring this back to us. The vote takes place here. Now, we have a request from two council members to postpone this until the next meeting, when Mr. Mills will be here. Regrettably, that should have taken place at the very beginning, and we got a little further into the program before we actually remembered to do that. But I would recommend, since we have those two requests, to honor that request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Having been one of the two, um, I want, you asked if there was any questions of staff, and I do have questions of staff.
Well, we've already closed the report, we're just gonna make a decision about what to do.
Well, I wasn't allowed to ask a question of staff. You asked Mr. McCullough if there was a question.
I asked if there were any questions, and I...
Well, I, I was ready to speak.
Okay, we'll have to get more clarification as this night goes on. Just, please ask your question.
I mean, I have, I have always looked at this as a bad business decision, but I have specific questions. The purchase price is $425,000. Who is paying the legal fees and the escrow fees above and beyond that $425,000?
Uh, the current escrow, I believe, pro rates them, um, there's some portion that's paid by the seller, it's a...
Who's paying our portion? I mean, and what is our portion?
We would pay our portion, it's a few thousand dollars. I have... Here. There's, um, well, the, the escrow just has the, the escrow, um, the escrow terms, and it doesn't have the closing costs in there, but there's closing costs.
Well, there's substantial closing costs and substantial legal costs that I haven't been able to figure out who's gonna pay, which I think the city will probably end up having to pay. And what happens, if, if the staff is reporting that this is gonna happen, what happens if both of those buyers, though both of those interested parties back out, the city is now stuck with the Winter's property? Is that correct?
Well, I, it's, um, it's doubtful that, well, if...[1331.33][1331.33](LAUGHTER). You, you would be able to, uh, put the property up for sale, and somebody else could...
And we would have to find somebody else to purchase it. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?[1344.83][1344.83](LAUGHTER). Okay. Um, then, um, I would move that we would postpone this until the next meeting at the request of two of our council members, which would be the following Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would object to that.
Okay.
I feel that we have citizens who took time out of their schedule to come down here and speak on this. If it goes to another meeting, that means they will have to come down and repeat their public testimony, and I don't think we need to inconvenience these people anymore. I think it's clear that this is not a good business decision on the part of the city, and I think we should take the vote tonight.
And I think...[1391.16][1391.16](APPLAUSE). And I think that you are certainly entitled to your opinion.[1401.51][1401.51](LAUGHTER). I have the responsibility, I believe, to respond to all council members, and I've had the request from two to postpone this.
I'll second your motion.
And I would think that I would, I would do so. However, you have not heard a complete staff report. There's a lot more information than what you have heard tonight. So I would recommend that those of you who have the interest in this, that you would please return, and that you could hear a full report. Thank you. Uh, do we need a, a vote on that?
You have a, um, motion and a second on the floor?
Okay, roll call?
Ms. Vogt?
No.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
The council rules of procedure say that when a member is absent and there is a tied vote, the item automatically continues to your next, uh, meeting. You do have a meeting scheduled for March 24th, is that when?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to item B, Merge Redevelopment Project Area Number Two Amendment. We're going to ask that those who are leaving, please do so quietly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Uh, this is requesting a, uh, public hearing on an amendment for Merge Project Area Number Two. Uh, I would just note that the state requires us to extend, uh, our eminent domain powers, uh, lest they be lost every certain, at a certain intervals of time. I would just note for the council that this is a commercial-only, not residential, on the eminent domain powers. Uh, if council would like further information, uh, Mr., uh, John Raymond's still here, he can answer the question, but this is just setting the public hearing. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Vogt?
I'll move the motion.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pugnay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, it will, it is carried, and we will, item C has been withdrawn, and we'll move to item D, 2003-04 Fiscal Year Budget Amendment, VIP Motors. Staff report, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this issue is, uh, one in essence that, that says that business has been better than anticipated for VIP Motors as part of an agreement the council entered into some time ago, on the total amount of assistance that they would give this company, this car dealership, was based on sales tax. This particular year's sales, uh, were higher than expectations, which would require this additional $60,000. It's coming from the RDA, uh, fund balance, not the general fund, and does not affect the total amount of dollars that were required to pay them under this, this agreement in total. Thank you.
Mr. Pugnay?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCullough. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. It is carried unanimously, one absent. And item E?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request to do three things. This is actually the, the former dump site that the city used to use for their garbage years, years and years ago, the corner of Gene Autry and Ramon. As you know, for some time, we've been working to make that a, a viable economic engine of a corner for, for retail, or whatever the potential of that property is. We've been precluded by that because of the dump site and the nature of the state laws on toxic landfills. Uh, at this point, we believe we have a, a project that actually can happen there. Uh, what is before you tonight is to do three things. One is to approve the license agreement, which will allow the developer to actually go onto the property to remediate the toxic substances from the dump site. Two, it's asking you to approve hiring of our consultant that will be the city's consultant to monitor that toxic cleanup in, to make sure that state standards are maintained in addition to with the, the state inspectors. And third, to extend the exclusive agreement for three years. Uh, for further details and any questions, Mr. Raymond can address those. Thank you.
Counsel, do we need any more of the report? If not, then I'll enter...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, if I could just add, um, the document that was included with your agenda packet, uh, we have continued, uh, since the agenda went out, having negotiations. Uh, we handed out, uh, tonight, a revised, uh, copy of, um, the agreement with a number of changes to it. Um, we would ask that, uh, in acting on it, that you act on the revised document. The document we handed out tonight, um, in addition to the changes that are shown there, there were, um, a couple other changes, uh, that, uh, have been recently came forward concerning, um, the approval, um, uh, the, the final approval of the work on the site, that that would be consistent with, uh, the action of the state, that if the state approves it, then that would be final action, and that there'd be a three-year, um, uh, limit on the exposure of, uh, the licensee-to-liability. Uh, so, we would request that you change, that you approve the document with, the revised documents you have before you, with those other two additional changes, and minor language changes in a form approved by the city attorney, or agency council. minor language changes in a form approved by the city attorney or agency counsel.
Okay, counsel? Is there a motion?
I'll move the approval.
And that's with final language being approved by the city attorney?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCullough. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. Three to one. It is carried. And now we will move...
Could I...
Yes.
Just for clarification, on the recommendation, we had the actual license agreement. There's also a consultant contract for the consultant services, and there's an extension of the current exclusive agreement on the property for three years. In terms of the motion, was that just on the license agreement?
No, it was on all three, as was presented.
Was Councilmember Pugnay against all three? Was that a no on all three, or just the license agreement?
The license agreement.
So could we then maybe separate and have a second motion that would deal with the three-year exclusive agreement to negotiate and the consultant contract separately?
Okay.
Yes, we'll do that.
If somebody were to say, "So move."
So moved.
Is there a so-second?
So-second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. McCullough. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt?
On the first one, aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
On this, I move the second one.
Second.
That's the one that we just voted on?
No, that's the second.
So I think, in other words, the first motion, it turned out, was just on the three-year exclusive. This motion is now on the consultant contract.
Right.
Okay. All right. Aye. You're asking.
Roll call. Ms. Vogt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye, again.
On the three-year exclusive agreement?
Yes.
You already acted on that.
Okay, which one haven't we done?
You've done all of them. You've got my no vote on the license agreement.
On the Winter property.
That's next week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before we move into public comments of the council, there is also a request on number... Item Number 25, the taxicab commercial signage, that Councilmember Mills had asked to be moved to the next meeting.
Number 25, the taxicab. Counsel, what... Okay, is there anything time-sensitive with this request?
There is not, Mayor.
There's nothing time-sensitive to it. It's going to come back to us anyway. It will come back to us anyway.
Well, the request is to move it to the next meeting, the 24th.
But the item will return regardless of what action we take tonight, because it's only to initiate a process.
This is the initiation of the zoning ordinance process, so indeed, it will come back at some other point in another form. But the request was to have this particular agenda item moved to the 7th before the process is initiated, moved to the 24th. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Then I will move to honor that.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, I again would object. We have this... The taxi companies have been waiting for this for almost a year, and we put it on the agenda tonight. This is not a decision-making part of our agenda. All we're doing is starting the process. It has to go through a long process from here. It's got to go to the Planning Commission. It has a lot of steps to go through. This vote tonight would just be to start the process. And am I correct? We would not be approving the signage tonight.
This is initiating a process.
A process. And I feel that we should go ahead and initiate that process.
I do understand that. I've been dealing with the Taxicab Association for a long time, but I think out of deference to a council member, I did the same thing for anyone else requesting that, and in his absence, I feel obliged to do so.
Can I have a vote on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
No.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
As with the other item, this is a tie vote. You have a member absent. This will continue till the 24th.
Okay, now we will move to our public comments. And the first person that I have, first card is Nancy Stewart, followed by Robin Burns, followed by Sergio Santo.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome, and you will have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here tonight to act upon a proactive stance to help with our budget issue. I have a petition to circulate here that is for a state amendment to go forward for us to protect our tax dollars here and leave them here in Palm Springs, as well as other municipalities. This is something that is a nonpartisan issue that's being endorsed by the League of Cities and also our Assemblywoman Bonnie Garcia. And this is really important because it allows us... You know, I wanted to take advantage of the potpourri of people here tonight that are here for so many different reasons, because this is going to really help us. What it does is it holds the legislature accountable. We send so much of our dollars to the state, and they have our checkbook, actually. They're holding it hostage. And they then create mandated programs that they say, "Okay, you've got to do this in the city. You've got to do this in the county." And then they don't send any of the funding back for us to support that. And that affects our criminal justice here, our roads and street maintenance, our public health, our trauma, our fire, and other services that we so desperately need to fund here in Palm Springs and other municipalities. It also helps the counties as well. I just wanted to let you know that we are out here right now gathering signatures for this. It's really vital that we do this because the time is really short. We have to get all signatures for this by April 15th. Also, we'll be downtown at Village Fest, right in front of Desmond's, tomorrow night and every Thursday night until we can get all of these. This is a volunteer effort, and I appreciate everyone's participation because it will make a big difference to save us some money. Bring it back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And in spite of the fact that you may have heard some names that you may not support, this is good bipartisan legislation, and everyone should support it. Thank you. Good evening, Robin.
Good evening. Happy St. Patrick's Day. It is a matter of dire importance and timing. I know you know, Mayor. Our taxi industry needs this advertising very badly. The taxi cabs and their drivers have been the goodwill ambassadors for our city. We are most likely the first service that clients... I'm sorry, I say clients because that's my lingo, but guests use when they come into the city from the airport, and most likely, the last service they're going to use when they leave. We make a real big impression. By passing advertising, you're going to do some very momentous things. You're going to have a life-impacting change for an industry that comprises approximately 300 people, 20 companies, 185 taxicabs. Beyond that, the win-win of this situation, which I know you've heard me say for the last 15 months, thank you for continuing to listen, is that the economics of it is over $1 million in revenue that's so needed for an industry that's comprised of mom-and-pops, small businesses, hanging on by a thread to still provide a great service, which I think we do have in this city. We are in a city that is one of... I have heard of one other in the country that doesn't allow taxicab advertising. We just want our right to provide, to have this revenue. The other win-win, though, that I really hope you consider, is that every time our taxicabs with the signage from the advertisers that are hopefully local businesses here goes out of town, as I did today, I was at LAX today, the message of Palm Springs and the tourism is going to be brought right back home here. Tourists will come back. The money will be spent here. The revenue generated from the advertising more than likely will benefit Palm Springs economy. And the other issue is that advertising toppers statistically have given us a measure of safety that we don't possess now. Less collisions, and we have the ability with the revenue and also with the actual topper to provide panic lights and other safety issues which we desperately need. City's growing. Transportation is the hub of it all, folks. We need to continue to do a good job. This will allow us to do a great job for you. I urge you to put it on the ballot quickly because we need it, and it's a win-win. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sergio? Good evening. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and Mr. Mills, who isn't here tonight. Basically, what we're asking for is, well, to start off, this started March 5th of 2003, and I've been down here 16 times?
A lot.
16 times. And I'm getting to know everybody real well, and that's neat. But hopefully, next week, we can get this thing going. But I think it's kind of ironic that next Wednesday at Sunline Service Group, a meeting that was called by the taxi industry, Sunline wants to discuss the fact that they no longer want to regulate the taxicab industry. And this came from Dennis Gilman in a conversation we had three days ago. And I don't know how Dennis will say the conversation went. That's the way I understood it. Two days ago, I got a call from Mr. Steve Diaz in Washington, DC, and these people, his group, have been discussing our situation here in Palm Springs, and they're a group of attorneys, and they're discussing that how our civil rights have been violated as a group for the last 12 years under Sunline. As you know, Sunline has advertising space all over their bus stops throughout the valley. They're our regulator, and they're also our competitor. And it's just... I just find that there's just too many coincidences all the time of how we try to go forward, and things get shoved back at us. You know, we're not a huge group of... We're not a consortium of huge businesses. We're 50 or 60 mom-and-pop operators with 20 companies. Our association represents 130 of taxicabs out there. We've got four companies that don't agree with a lot of things that we're saying, but on the advertising issue, everybody agrees. And then I understand this week, we have a media company driving through Palm Springs with a big truck pulling an ad, advertising thing behind it, in direct violation of Palm Springs ordinances. Why are they doing this? Are they trying to put out a message that, hey, this is what's going to happen with this advertising? Well, nothing could be farther from the truth. In fact, our advertising would be getting rid of that kind of nonsense. Thank you for your time. Have a good night. See you next week.
Thank you. I have Ron Salona, followed by Carol Belassa, and followed by Lauren Berthelsen. Good evening. Welcome. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Oden and City Council members. My name is Ron Salona. I am a resident of the city of Rancho Mirage. I work in the city of Palm Desert, and I spend my money in the city of Palm Springs. I am here to represent our community, both in Palm Springs and the Palm Springs metropolitan area, who oppose the proposed amendment to the Constitution of the United States that will limit marriage to one man and one woman. In my hand, I have the names of both straight and gay and lesbian members of our community who are with us in the chamber this evening that want to be heard. If they will, stand up as I call their names. Jim Cameron, single, 65. Bill Feingold, single, a chairman of HRC. Ernest and Jason, together, 35 minutes. John... John and Bob, together, eight months. Stephanie and Tamara, one year. Steve and Dustin, one year. Ron and Paul, one year. Richard and Luke, three years. Philip and Dean, three and a half years, married in San Francisco on February 14th. Wade and Dudley, together, five years. Chris and Mike, together, five years. Bob and Tony, six-plus years. Jake and JD, seven years. Tom and Jim, eight years. Wayne and Ray, together, eight years. Tom and John, eight years. Becky and Rhonda, nine years. Cliff and Travis, 10 years. Lauren and Alex, 10 years. Madge and Harriet, 10 years. Andy and Tim, 11 years. Irene and Linda, 11 years. Donald and Jeffrey, together, 12 years. Cheryl and Lois, together, 12 years. Doug and Carl, 12 years. Bill and Kurt, 12 years. Ray and Rich, 13 years. Bill and Greg, 14 years. Mark and Kevin, together, 15 years. Roger and Randy, 15 years. Pam and Tori, 15 years. Ken and Robert, 15 years. Gil and John, 15 years. Don and Al, 16 years. Cindy and Paula, together, 18 years. Myself and my partner, Dr. Scott Sherman, 19 years. Louis and James, 20 years.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Oden and council members. I'm Carol Belassa.
Please continue.
I'm the co-president of the Local Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays. I'd like to continue reading about these brave couples. Bob Prevo and Les Willer, 21 years. Mark and Greg, 23 years. Robin and Rosie, 24 years. John and Don, 24 years. Joe and Joe, 28 years. Art and Dennis, 30 years. Bill and Bob, 31 years. Brian and Bernard, 31 years. Elaine and Diane, 32 years. Frank and Stan, 33 years. Ron and Richard, 33 years. Ted and Jim, my good friends, 34 years. Jack Toller and Bob Yeager, 35 years. Thomas and Robert, 36 years. Woody and Douglas, you're wonderful, 43 years. My daughter and her partner have been together 11 years. I want them to receive the same equal rights as other couples. I want them to have the same legal protections. Please oppose the proposed amendment to the Constitution that will limit marriage to one man and one woman. Thank you very much.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Berthelsen. This is my partner, Alex Lindsay, 10 years, hoping for the 40-some years coming up. There are so many things I could say. First of all, I want to thank you for your support. This is an incredibly important issue for us. I want to thank Ms. Vogt for bringing this resolution to the chamber, or to the council, rather, and I know that you're going to do the right thing. And I want to thank all these people. Nothing I could say would be more poignant and more to the point than the statement you just saw. These are not people that are going to destroy anything. These are decades of love and commitment that you're seeing before you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Followed by Kevin Hewitt.
I wasn't expecting to have to do this. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I want to, I came here to congratulate you on leadership. You have already, in this city collectively, all five of you, made a startling positive change in Palm Springs. It is remarkable what people are talking about, and how many rooms like this have you had before you five were here? And I thank you for that. And tonight, you're going to show leadership by the real definition of leadership, by passing this resolution to condemn this discriminatory amendment to our Constitution. You're going to join a couple very recent, exciting leaders and heroes. Gavin Newsom, the mayor of San Francisco, and very recently, I believe, Jose Luis Rodriguez Sapoeteros in Spain. Those people are inspiring us to continue to fight for equal rights globally for everyone. And tonight, you five, you four, who are here tonight, will be able to do that as well. So I thank you for providing you this inspiration. And since I occasionally involved in elective politics, I would like to put into the public record, the reason we have you here is that we voted, and we voted in big numbers. And what I encourage you to do is remember that not everyone is sharing with us this great leadership that we have here. And to do that, we have to register to vote, we have to go vote, and we talked about this earlier, we have to get people to vote by mail. And we passed these out earlier, they're applications for vote by mail, they're the most effective way for any of us to tell our friends and neighbors the importance of the vote. So do that, but I'm mainly here to say thank you for, I as well know what the four of you are going to do tonight, and I am so happy to live in a city like this. Thank you.
Kevin Hewitt, followed by Robert Van Etten.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Most Americans oppose amending the United States Constitution to ban same-sex marriages. According to Newsweek's poll carried out February nineteenth, twentieth, two thousand and four, fifty-six percent of Americans either oppose such an amendment or support gay marriages. In, in more than two hundred years of American history, the US Constitution has been amended only seventeen times since the Bill of Rights. In each instance, except for, for the prohibition, which was repelled, repelled, it extended rights and liberties to American people, not restrict them. For example, our Constitution amended, amended the end of our nation's tragic history of slavery. It also amended the guarantee for people of color, young people, and women the right to vote. The amendment currently under, under consideration, called the Federal Marriage Amendment, would be the only one that would single out one class of Americans for discrimination by ensuring that same-sex couples would not be guaranteed the equal protection that marriage brings to other American families. Moreover, the amendment, amendment could go even further by stopping same-sex couples of some of the more limited protections that are already given to us by some states, like health insurance for domestic partners and their children. The late Speaker of the House Tip O'Neill said it best, "All politics is local." What we're trying to say here, look at the turnout, we are all local. We want you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening.
Robert Van Etten, Palm Springs. First of all, thank you for valuing my life and our lives. Our country has long prided itself on upholding the principle of separation of church and state. The current firestorm of discussions addressing the issues of same-sex marriage, however, has generated arguments whose logic is hopelessly convoluted. I would like to say a few words this evening restricted to the state aspect of this issue. Three days ago, the former Surgeon General, Dr. Elders, addressed the issue of same-sex marriage. She said, quote, "I see no problem with gay couples marrying. It's a decision between two people. The government has no business interfering. I remember when it was against the law for blacks and whites to be married, and that wasn't very long ago," end quote. The actual date was nineteen sixty-seven, and I'm old enough to remember the argument supporting the mixed marriage ban. Surprise, surprise. The number-one argument was, in effect, what it would do to the sanctity of marriage. The number-two argument was the negative impact it would have on the children born to those unions. Fortunately, we have learned that the number-one factor leading to successful marriage is love, not ethnicity. We have also discovered that the primary ingredient in successful child-rearing is love, not racial heritage. Unfortunately, the heterosexual community has apparently totally missed the point, as currently more than fifty percent of marriages end in divorce. This in spite of the fact that, according to the General Accounting Office of the federal government, one thousand and forty-nine special privileges slash responsibilities are automatically granted to married couples. I remind you that we are not asking for special rights, just equal rights. Dr. Elders also stated, "The moment you see something wrong and don't say anything is the moment you start to die," end quote. While I did not move to Palm Springs to start to die. What I and many others here tonight have done is to start or continue to fight for equal rights for all Americans. I consider any attempt to modify the Constitution to deny rights to a specific, specific segment of society as despicable. Advocates of the same-sex marriage have been referred to as the Rosa Parks of the twenty-first century, and I am telling you now that there is no way that I will accept being forced to sit in the back of the bus.
Good evening. Welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here today. I have some good news and I have some bad news. The bad news is over four hundred thousand homosexuals have died prematurely in the last ten years. The worst news is hundreds of thousands of more are dying. According to the American Psychiatric Association, three out of every ten homosexuals who come out and begin having sex at twenty will be dead by their own thirtieth birthday. According to the American Journal of Public Health, homosexuals are four thousand times more likely to, to get anal cancer, and one thousand times more likely to get AIDS. Lesbians have the highest incidence of domestic violence, the highest rate of breast cancer, and cervical cancer. Marriage is not a civil right, it is a social promotion. The government promotes family units that will remain healthy together.
Let's be respectful to every speaker, whether we agree or not.
Thank you.
This is his time. Please continue.
Marriage is, marriage is a social promotion, and the question here is not whether or not people are born homosexual, but whether or not people can be socialized into it. And every credible psychologist says, yes, people can be socialized into homosexuality. If, whether they're born that way or not, you can be socialized into it. And if this is true, the government...
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask you once again, if you disagree, hold your disagreement. There'll be no outbursts. We respect every speaker.
That's all right. It's all right.
No, it's not all right. Please continue.
Socialization is possible, and if we teach children at a young age that homosexuality is, is okay and, and is not unhealthy, then thousands more children, my children and my children's children, have the possibility of being socialized into it and thereby suffering from the health hazards included in it. I don't believe that anyone in this room is who I'm talking about. You guys are a minority in the homosexual community. According to Bell and Weinberg, they say that with surveys, twenty-five percent of lesbians form close relationships and ten percent of homosexuals, and I respect you for that. But the vast majority do not. And today, with all the statistics, I do not think, I do not think that marriage should be promoted for homosexuals because it tells children that it is normal, and that they should experiment, and it confuses children, and that could lead them down the, the health roads that so many others have been victims through. Thank you very much.
Are you, are you finished?
Yes.
Pastor Jerry Johnson, you'll have three minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you were next. I'm sorry. Elaine, I'm sorry.
And I just wanted to say one thing to that young man that was here.
Well, that's fine, but it'll come out of your three minutes.
That's fine. I'm sure some of his best friends are blacks and Jews. What I wanted to, no, I didn't mean it that way. That's how a lot of people sort of try to justify what they're saying, hate words. What I wanted to bring up tonight is I would like to challenge every Californian and every American to look in the eyes of the people that stood up here tonight. We are your parents, we are your children, we are your sisters and brothers, and we are Americans. We have fought for you, we have died for you in the military, in the police, in the fire department. We are your grocers and your plumbers, and we are Americans, and we are entitled to equal rights. And that's what they need to give us.
Thank you, Pastor Jerry Johnson. You will have three minutes.
Oh, it started? Okay. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I am Pastor Jerry Johnson of the Lillie of the Valley Church of God in Christ, two hundred West Oasis Road, Palm Springs. In August two thousand and two, the City Council instructed the city clerk to send clergy ministers a letter concerning religious prayer and referring to the name of Jesus during part of a litigation taking part in another city. In response, on August the twenty-first, two thousand and two, I stood before the council as a US citizen and a Christian to be afforded the right to pray in the name of Jesus. If I could not exercise my right, I requested for my name to be withdrawn from your list of clergy to perform the invocation at City Council. Now I stand before the council again concerning item twenty-eight of the agenda, the proposal to request opposition to the federal Constitution amendment which states that marriage is between a man and a woman. I and my constituents are asking you not to oppose this amendment. The institution of marriage was ordained by God, and in its original intent, it was not for two people to find a mate for life, having intimate sexual relationship or even receiving benefits, though this is part of it. However, marriage in its original form is also for reproduction, not to adopt a child, but to bear children. This can only be accomplished between a man and a woman. If you don't have to hear, if you don't want to hear what God has to say about marriage and reproduction, let's examine what scientists say concerning male and female. Deoxyribonucleic acids, which is DNA scientists discovered in nineteen oh five, one chromosome X was much larger than the other Y. In human beings, this mismatch pair of X and Y chromosome is seen exclusively in male cells. A match pair of Xs in the chromosome is found in the female cells. Thus, XX chromosome determines femaleness. XY chromosomes determine maleness. How you feel inside isn't, isn't the determining factor, according to science. Obviously, anyone can choose to do whatever they desire, this still doesn't constitute an absolute. According to God and scientists, a man is a man and a woman is a woman, and I must affirm, inform you that I am not homophobic. According to the Bible, sexual immorality is a sin, whether it's committed by a single male or female, married or unmarried, it's morality, it's morally wrong. I'm also under the assumption, the City Council is bound by... I think, I think we were gathering, I did not start speaking...
I'll give you a couple more seconds, Jerry.
Okay. Lastly, as an African-American, I am highly offended when I hear gay activists consider their issue a civil right matter, and blacks should understand because we're going through the same things. And just a few decades ago, in many states, blacks were not permitted to marry whites. This is apples and oranges. Homosexuals were not packed in ships like sardines and shipped across the seas, separating our families, working as slaves on plantations in master's houses, falsely accused of crimes which the prosecutor jury and judge knew we were innocent. As recently as nineteen ninety-eight, an African-American man in Texas was dragged down the street behind a truck until he was dismembered because of the color of his skin.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna have to ask you to come to a close now.
Okay, I'll come to a close. Therefore...
No, no, Jerry.
Okay.
I, I gave you twenty extra seconds, which I kind of estimated for the additional time, and I took you together.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have Mrs. Angelique Parker, followed by Bill Ransom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Evernell Black.
Oh.
The Adeline Missionary Baptist Church in Palm Springs has been an active part of the city of Palm Springs for forty-five years.
Hold on, just, just a moment. I called for Ms. Parker?
No, I'm, I'm speaking instead.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Has been a part of Palm Springs for forty-five years, and has served the spiritual needs of the city, the desert highland, the Gateway Community, and the surrounding communities, working with the city inclusive of past and current leadership in shaping the great city in which we live. We believe in the inerrancy of the Bible, God's Word, its effectiveness in governing and guiding all living things, and its literal application for the world and those who live in it. For the betterment of life, God's Word is real and alive. We hold to the fundamental doctrine of the Bible, its definition of marriage, which was instituted by God himself in the Garden of Eden, when he joined Adam and Eve, man and woman, in the institution of marriage. Furthermore, we see marriage defined as a union blessed by God between a man and a woman. God uses marriage to illustrate the relationship between Christ and the church, displaying Jesus Christ as the bridegroom who will one day soon unite with his bride, the church. The people of the great state of California have, through the democratic process, defined marriage as a union between man and woman, and have spoken through their votes to make into law the legal definition of marriage as a union of man and woman. The pastor, officers, and members of the Adeline Missionary Baptist Church stands with Pastor Jerry Johnson and the Lillie of the Valley Church of God in Christ, Pastor Rodney Croom of the First Baptist Church of Palm Springs, El de Black of the New Bethel Church of God in Christ, in opposition to the city redefining marriage other than that of a union between a man and a woman. The pastor, officers, and members of Adeline Missionary Baptist Church do not stand with the City Council of Palm Springs in its gruesome attempt to rewrite the law of God and the law of the state of California by accepting and agreeing with the marriage in any other form. The pastor, officers, and members of the Adeline Missionary Baptist Church will continue to abide by the laws of this state and the supreme law of God. to abide by the laws of this state and the supreme law of God, and therefore cannot consciously support any of the city of Palm Springs leadership in any manner if they continue in their disrespectful attempt to break the law of the state and the law of God. It is our prayer that our city, the city in which we enjoy being a part of, will continue to grow and continue to be the jewel of the Coachella Valley. We desire a progressive city that accepts and embraces people from all walks of life. However, we do not desire such at the cost of being a city that breaks the law of this state and the law of God. Please do not allow any personal agenda of one person, a group of characters, a group, I'm sorry, to characterize our beloved city as one who has no respect of the law. What a sad commentary it would be, bring upon the elected leaders of our city, who has been chosen by the people to lead a judicious manner, to now stand in opposition of what is right, to appease a small faction with a heinous agenda.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Pastor Sidney Park of the Adeline Missionary Baptist.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Ransom? He may be in the other room. Mr. Ransom, Bill Ransom. Then I'll call Mr. Jeffrey Sankar, followed by Cindy Chason and Judith Doyle. I don't see any of these people. Bill Ransom, Jeffrey Sankar, Cindy Chason. Cindy, come on, you're here, I see you. Come on down. Good evening and welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, good evening. I am black, I'm a woman, I'm a disabled veteran, I have served my country, and I have been with my partner for 18 years. We have raised two children. One is in their second year at UC San Diego, one is a viable source in this community working. We are not deviants. We are people who, if marriage is a term that is too strong for you, then give us a term that allows us to be equal rights. If there was a term for blacks other than equal rights, it would have been easier to swallow, but there wasn't, because equal rights is what it is about. Not the word marriage, but that I don't have to worry about my children, as we did as they were growing up, if something were to happen to one of us, that we had to worry who would be allowed in the hospital, who was the right one. We both worked, we both were at the school, we both volunteered, we were there. She was in the hospital, we had to have documents saying I could be there. Why? It should be because we are. We are not asking to be let into your homes, we are asking for you to stay out of ours and let us live.
Be seated, thank you. Judith Doyle? Good evening and welcome, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you kindly, good evening. I would like to allow somebody else who wrote something very eloquent to be heard. It's a letter from a friend of mine that he wrote to the President of the United States, and it reads this way. Dear Mr. President, I could not avoid you tonight as your support, as your support for the federal constitutional amendment banning same-sex marriage blared throughout the airport lounge via CNN. As I listen to your confusing messages about family and values and politics, I shared sadness with my fellow travelers about your continuing fear-driven approach to leadership. Your defense of traditional marriage rang hollow, rather it was a poor endorsement for discrimination, ignorance, and your conservative political view. Uncharacteristically, I decided not to be angry, offended, or cynical, rather I desperately want to understand you and your allies on this issue and take the high road in that engagement. So I invite you, Laura, and your daughters, to spend a day with my family and explain why you are championing such a cause. Spend a day with my life partner of 24 years, who is one of the most remarkable human beings you'll ever have the privilege of meeting. A public school teacher, Bob, has spent his life inspiring students and parents alike with his commitment to a values-laden and creative approach to learning, serving as a strong, life-challenging role model for countless young, at-risk youth for over the years. Spend a day with our energetic and cheerful seven-year-old son, Ben. Ben will treat you to an active day full of homework, piano lessons, Lego projects, friends, chores, soccer, and baseball. Fully steeped in the values of love, sharing, friendship, and learning, Ben is immensely proud of his two adoring and engaged parents, and wonderfully enriched by a diverse and supportive neighborhood. Spend a day with our extraordinary community of friends and neighbors who reflect the America of today and the future mixed in race, language, background, family structures, and ideas, but united in their deep commitment to our children, to creating a better future, to loving our country, and to enjoying the richness of life. Spend a day, Mr. President, with our extended families that has supported us with unconditional love through good times and bad ones. Our parents, aunts, uncles, siblings, cousins, nieces, and nephews spread around the country formed the foundation of our world. Over the years, we have celebrated countless joyous holidays and celebrations together, as well as helping them in endless ways through illness, financial problems, divorces, and other family dramas. Spend a day with us as we engage in our community as a family and as individuals, as we actively volunteer at Ben's School, as we have headed up the local United Way, and done so many more wonderful things. And it's signed, sincerely Steve Davis of Seattle, Washington. And this man is right on the button, and I ask you, please, to not support the amendment to our constitution.
Thank you. Jeffrey Sankar, last call. If there's anyone else who would like to speak in public comments, I ask that you would come forward at this time. I'm gonna ask you to line up so we'll have some idea of what we're dealing with here, okay? All right. That's it. Okay. Good evening, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Thomas Vanette in Palm Springs. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but after listening to my brothers and sisters of the African-American community, I really felt that I had to get up and say, I will be 60 years old next month, and never did I think in my wildest dreams that I would witness a group of people that represent a minority in this country to speak the way they did this evening about another minority in this country. I am old enough to have marched and fought for the civil rights of the American black man and woman in this country. I was instrumental in my job in Human Resources at IBM to ensure that all of the injustices that were promulgated in the past were rectified in our hiring and our promotion at IBM of African-Americans. And I want to say to my African-American friends that I am certain that on those slave ships, we had African homosexuals and African lesbians sold into slavery. And may I add, because I am so angry at what I've heard tonight from African-Americans, may I add, please, that during World War II, we, yes, maybe a lot of us who are white and gay and lesbian don't know what it's like to be sold into slavery ships to be brought over here, but we do know what it was like to have pink triangles pinned on our clothing and gassed in gas chambers in Nazi Germany because we were homosexual or lesbian. Come on, people, this is 2004, let's stop the hate and start working together.
Good evening, Luke, you'll have three minutes, and thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Luke Van Ash, Palm Springs. I'm in a relationship of three years, and I am also outraged at what I heard from the African community. I, they might not know, but about 100 years ago, I might not have been able to marry as a gay man, but I was able to own one of them. And they could marry, and I could separate them if I wanted to. I could have torn them apart, stole their spouse one way and the other one the other way. And I want to ask them, how would they like for me to still have that right, to discriminate against them? I am so tired to be moralized by so-called Christians who have waged war. The straight society has no moral higher ground. You're still battling, fighting, killing one another, raping one another, and you're telling me I'm threatening you? No, I am not. I might give you an inspiration as what love can be, because I have seen love in the gay community, and I tell you what, it's beautiful, and I would never, ever want to be straight.
Okay, next, please, give your name to the clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ernie Vincent, I'm with Palm Springs Modern Homes here in Palm Springs. I guess I'm somewhat out of order. I really wanted to speak on Agenda Item Number 26.
You're at the right place.
I just want to say, we have an item up for discussion tonight, Assessment District Number 162, and I won't go into any details, I just want to say that we've got developer representatives here and experts that we have who can answer any questions that you might have at that time. And I have a handout, which the city clerk has, which he'll pass to you, which hopefully you will have the opportunity to read at the time that we discuss the item. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Good evening, Alex.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to address our friends in the back, not as members of the African-American community, but as members of the church and friends of God. I think it's imperative for us to remember that this is America, and I absolutely firmly understand your faith, and you have every right to practice your faith in your home. You do not have the right to make me practice your faith. I don't want to marry my partner in your church if your church does not want to marry us. I want to be married in a civil ceremony under the law, the law that is intended to protect each and every one of us, including your right to your own religion, and not the religion of the state of the United States. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Philip Colavito from Palm Springs. I'm one of the people that got married in San Francisco in February, February 20th. We got married because we love each other, for all the right reasons, and the reasons that are meant to be a couple, for a couple to get married. It wasn't because we had to get married, it wasn't because our parents expected us to get married, it wasn't because we had children, it wasn't because one of us got pregnant, it's because the two of us felt that we wanted to commit. We wanted to love each other, we felt good about each other, we felt good about a country that we have supported financially and then politically, it was finally recognizing us. Someone said, yes, you know what, you can do it, you love each other, then you have the right to get married, and that's what it's all about. And then to hear a preacher say that marriage was meant for procreation, then what happens to all of those couples that can't have children? How about all the old people that want to get married in their 90s who can't have children? Does that mean that we're going to be testing male and female, and the moment in time when one of them cannot conceive, then they don't have a right to be married? It just doesn't make sense, that's not what God was talking about. My God loves me, I believe in God, I'm a Christian, He forgives me for the things that I do wrong to another person, not when I love another person. And Bush allowing us to go to war and killing each other in Iraqi over lies, but saying that then I'm not allowed to love another person. I find a lot of discrepancies, and I know that, you know, this ban on marriage may go away, or it may be enforced, because we're kind of in infancy, we're adolescents in our community, we used to just want to party, and now finally we want to love, and there's nothing wrong with that. We're not asking to be bad, we're not asking to do things that aren't normal, we're just asking for the rights that everyone else has, we're asking for the rights that we support for each other, not just for us, but for every individual, Asian, black, male, female, it doesn't matter, we just want all the same rights. And I don't think we're threatening anybody, my lover and I, since we've been married, we just go around, daily activities, still clean the house, still have breakfast, still work, still do all the normal things, and I don't see anything, any homes or any families falling because 4,100 people, couples, were married in San Francisco. Thank you.
Milt Levinson, and I too, Mr. Mayor and council, speaking a little bit out of order.
You're in the right place, too. You'll have three minutes and welcome.
I am representing the Rotary Clubs of Palm Springs, and we wanted to inform the public here, and the public watching on TV, that the Rotary Clubs of Palm Springs, with your support, are planning on bringing in the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall into the community on April 19th through the 25th. This half-sized replica of the Vietnam Wall that's in Washington, DC, will be in our community, will be the only Southern California exhibit of this wall. We hope to man it 24 hours a day for the full week. It contains 58,000 names of heroic men and women that served our country and died for our country. We are hoping the public will come and pay its respects to the wall. We are having an opening ceremony on the 20th of April at 2:00 p.m. The Marine Corps Band from 29 Palms will be here, the Marine Corps Color Guard will be here, many officials of the government will be here to celebrate the wall, and we hope that the public will come and pay their respects to the moving wall. And I thank you for your support of Item Number 17 on the calendar. Thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here at a totally new subject and a refreshing subject. I'm here tonight on behalf of the hospitality industry, and my name is Aftab Dara, General Manager at the Hilton Palm Springs Resort. I'm here tonight in front of you requesting the suspension of the noise ordinance for the three-day event for the White Party that will take place in the second week of April. As you all know, this will be the 15th year for this event, and this has become the number one event as far as the revenue generation is concerned for the hospitality industry in the city of Palm Springs. The events compared to last year's are going to be significantly less. The biggest complaints we had last year was the event that took place at the Knott's Park. This event has been now canceled for the 2004 event. This event has been now canceled for the 2004 event, and some of the night events have also been canceled. So I'm here, and I hope that you will support 100% for the suspension of this ordinance. As you all know it, that Jeffrey Senker, the promoter, is a very unique promoter for our city. He's one of those unique promoters that doesn't ask for any financial aid or support, either in cash or in-kind services. Not only he is the number one customer for the hospitality industry, but I believe he's also the number one customer for the city of Palm Springs. So please support. Thank you.
And thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor—
Good evening—
—and welcome.
—and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Dwayne Rohrbaum, the General Manager of the Wyndham Hotel, 888 Talkwoods Canyon Way. I guess Aftab and I should have compared notes because he pretty much said everything that I was going to say, so I'll keep this quite brief. I too would like your support and the temporary suspension of the noise ordinance over the White Party weekend. There will be no late-night outdoor events like there has been in the past. Everything has been moved indoors. So—and as I did last year, I will personally write a letter to the residents, letting them know, be aware of the events that are happening that weekend, and, you know, we—we really need this event to continue coming back to Palm Springs. It's been here for 15 years. We cannot afford to lose this to another city. Thank you for your support.
And thank you. Good evening. You'll have three minutes. Welcome.
My name is Grace Garner. I'm 18 years old. I'm heterosexual. This is my mother, Juanita Garner, and she's been married to my father for 18 years. I just don't understand why this is an issue. Why is it an issue that two people who love each other cannot get married? Why is it an issue? It shouldn't be an issue. Because—America is supposed to be the land of equality and opportunity and freedom. Everyone should be able to have equal rights, no matter who they are, no matter what color they are, no matter who they love, no matter what—they should all be equal. It's not fair, and it makes me so sad and upset that everyone cannot understand this concept. Everyone needs to care and love each other. If everyone did this, our world would be such a better place.
And with that point, we will take a recess.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council. This was a resolution council member Fote had asked us last week to bring it to your attention—to—to the council agenda today, which we did. It was a resolution opposing the constitutional ban on gay marriage. And with that, Mr. Mayor, is about all the staff report I have. Ms. Fote may want to take it from there if there's any additional details she would like to add. Thank you.
Okay. Then I ask you to enter quietly. Ms. Fote? Yeah, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just—before I—before I start my remarks, which—which I did write for tonight because I—I felt that I was going to be very emotional, and I—I am very emotional because the—the—the people that stood up here—I—I am so honored that you came here tonight to—to support this. I also wanted to make a comment to my black brothers and sisters that in 1962 and 63, I spent much of my life organizing the buses that went to the March on Washington and—from the state of New York. And I watched Martin Luther King give his "I Have a Dream" speech, and this has been a dream of mine for a long time, so this is a personal issue for me. And I want to preface my remarks by responding to a question about why I requested that this resolution be put on the agenda and what it has to do with Palm Springs and a statement that this council's opposition to a change to the U.S. Constitution is meaningless. I believe that one of my roles as a city council member is to protect the rights of the citizens of this incredible city, whether it be through votes to uphold neighborhood decisions, advocating on behalf of individuals or groups of city residents, or to create ways in which residents have a voice in their government. Opposing an amendment to our Constitution that would just discriminate against citizens of Blythe or Bakersfield may or may not be appropriate for this council chamber. But as you read the words over the council chamber, the people are this city, you must recognize that a large portion of our city are lesbian and gay. I would be remiss if I didn't speak out, regardless of my personal beliefs or personal identity, no matter how popular or unpopular my speaking out may be. Our Constitution is not some piece of paper that lives in Washington DC that has nothing to do with the citizens of Palm Springs. The Constitution is the law of our land and should not be used as a means of deciding important debates about public policy. Our Constitution should never be used to discriminate against a segment of our society or be used to further the goals of the current thinking of opponents of a controversial issue. Marriage is not a church issue. Marriage is a legal document. Churches can choose to confirm holy matrimony on their believers, but they must be a civil license first. We are talking about civil license. Only one time in our country's history has a public policy dispute been written into our Constitution. That was 80 years ago and was prohibition, and we all know how successful that was. Amendments to our Constitution have always been used to expand and enshrine freedoms, not deny them. The two most notable being the abolishment of slavery, and my favorite, of course, the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. This is not a political issue. We all know that there are numerous high-ranking Republicans and Democrats that are against amending our Constitution. This is a public policy issue that must be determined by thoughtful discussion and change led by our citizens and our states. The gay and lesbian residents of Palm Springs have contributed greatly to the success of this world-class city. They are our neighbors, our clergy, our doctors, our teachers, our commission members, our city staff, and yes, some of us are your city council. It would be unconscionable for us not to take a stand—to stand by and not watch, day after day, the extremists in our society make the ugly and outrageous accusations of what would happen if there was not a constitutional amendment against gay marriage. I would like to read you a quote that pretty much mirrors the beliefs of many people. Quote, "This matter should be related—regulated by the states. I think different states are likely to come to different conclusions, and that's appropriate. I don't think there should necessarily be a federal policy in this area. I think we ought to do everything we can to tolerate and accommodate whatever kind of relationships people want to enter into. We live in a free society, and freedom means freedom for everybody." Unquote. That statement was made by Vice President Dick Cheney. Our citizens elected this council, understanding that this would be a bold and outspoken We ran on not business as usual. We took an oath to protect our citizens and the Constitution of the United States. I believe that opposition to amending this great document is my responsibility as an elected official and servant of the people of Palm Springs. You have seen the faces of your neighbors here tonight, and I'm speaking directly to the people at home. You can look at them and tell them that their love and devotion to each other does not epitomize family values. Can you tell them that they are not worthy to be protected by this great document? Can you tell them that they must live as second-class citizens with no rights to survivorship, health coverage, health decisions, parenting their children in our city, in our country? I think not. And therefore request of my council colleagues a unanimous vote in favor of opposing this outrageous amendment to our Constitution. resolution and its meaning, that we are not breaking the law here tonight. We are enforcing the law of this land. So that everyone at home is clear that we are not, nor can we by law, begin performing gay marriages in Palm Springs, unfortunately, I will take the time to read the resolution Constitution banning same-sex marriage. And whereas laws governing marriage have always been a matter for the states to decide, and in fact, various states are grappling with this issue at this time, and in California, Supreme Courts have begun, the Supreme Court has begun to consider the issue of same-sex marriage, and the state Supreme Court will be asked to rule on this issue. And whereas given these facts, an amendment to the United States Constitution is unnecessary and represent a diversion of precious time and resources that would be better used to address the more pressing issues facing our nation. And whereas specifically by unanimous vote on March 5, 2000, the city of Palm Springs City Council passed an ordinance to the municipal code to establish a policy extending to unmarried domestic partners certain rights afforded married couples. And whereas proponents and opponents of a proposed constitutional amendment agree that such an amendment would undermine and wipe out such domestic partnership protections and recognition. And whereas marriage confers over 1,000 rights and benefits that are unfairly denied to same-sex couples, harming them and their families, such as access to healthcare, tax credits, pensions, inheritance rights, et cetera. And whereas the Palm Springs City Council recognizes and embraces diversity, as many members of our community are in committed gay or lesbian relationships and would benefit from a same-sex marriage legal framework, conversely, they would be harmed by a constitutional amendment prohibiting the same. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Palm Springs City Council does not support legislation at any level of government that would limit individual rights or contribute to cultural bias in any form. Be it further resolved that the city of Palm Springs City Council does hereby resolve to fervently oppose a federal constitutional amendment prohibiting same-sex marriage. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. That's a hard one to follow, Ginny. My comments are very personal as well. The President of the United States, on February 24, 2004, called for an amendment to the United States Constitution banning same-sex marriage. He has called for a constitutional amendment to discriminate against gays and lesbians. He has called for a constitutional amendment to limit civil liberties and to limit the expression of freedom to a targeted group of Americans. He has called for an amendment to defend the sanctity of marriage. He goes as far to say that my 12-year relationship with my partner, Christopher, threatens his and others heterosexual marriages. He has called for an amendment of the Constitution to divide the country instead of uniting the country on an issue where emotions certainly run deep. We all know that Palm Springs has a large gay and lesbian population. Some are single, some have partners, a few or many years. They contribute heavily to the economic vitality of this diverse and tolerant city. Tonight is about equal rights. Tonight is about sending a message to George W. Bush that Palm Springs believes that his proposed constitutional amendment to ban same-sex marriage is mean-spirited, intolerant, limits the expansion of rights, and is discriminatory to a targeted group of individuals. I have been asked during the past several days, is this indeed an issue that the elected officials of Palm Springs should be discussing? Ms. Fote has answered that question. It is our duty, and it is our responsibility. I believe a majority of the citizens in Palm Springs share that feeling, straight and gay. I want to thank Councilmember Fote tonight for bringing this resolution to us. I want to thank all the citizens here, all the citizens who have spoken, and all who are watching on TV. And although I know there will be some more discussion here on this, at this point in time, I am making a motion to approve the resolution as read by Councilmember Fote. Thank you.
We do have a motion and...
Second.
And a second. There was a motion. You didn't make that motion. The resolution.
The resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Pugnay moved the resolution. I seconded it.
Okay. Ms. McCullough.
Okay. First, I want to make it clear that I too oppose the constitutional amendment that's proposed. Actually, I actually, since I started serving on the Human Rights Commission about five years ago, I actually carry the Constitution with me at all times. And it's amazing that this little tiny thing can be such a big document.[957.06][957.06](APPLAUSE). I want to address a few comments that I've had. Most of the comments have come to us in emails and telephone calls have been supportive of this resolution. It's obviously not a statistical sample. I did get one call where I was accused of, if I were to vote in favor of this resolution, of pandering to the gay community. I said to that caller that, who identified themselves as a citizen of Palm Springs and a resident, that I found that offensive. And he said, "Well, I don't think it's offensive." And I said, "Well, I consider pandering to be a derogatory term." I then went to the dictionary after the phone call was over. That was the end of the phone call, by the way.[1004.81][1004.81](LAUGHTER). Pandor is a person who helps other people indulge low desires, passions, or vices. A lot of people, some other people questioned, and I think it's a legitimate question, is about why should this federal issue or state issue be on a city council agenda? I think that's a decision for another day that the council ought to discuss, what kind of things we're going to bring to council. I think it would be a cop-out to say, "I don't think it should be on the agenda, so I'm not going to vote on it," or something like that. I think the people that are here today and the people that are watching and the citizens of Palm Springs deserve a yea or nay vote on this issue. And also, there was some concern about, "Well, you're not speaking for me as a citizen of Palm Springs in the, in this resolution." This is, we're speaking as a city council with this resolution. And we're not, we're not being so arrogant as to say that we're representing all the people of Palm Springs, because I'm sure there's people on both sides of this issue in Palm Springs. And that's, that's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
It is a little surprising to me to see the reaction of some members of the gay community to the response of people who came up to speak their minds. What color is the sky in your world? A lot of people believe that way. And for them to come here tonight and share honestly their thoughts gives, I think, the community a reality check about what's really out there. In addition, there may have been African-American speaking, but it's not an African-American issue. It crosses all socioeconomic stratas. It's important for us to realize that. But this is not a theocracy. We are here to support the Constitution of the United States of America, and we took an oath to do that, and the Constitution of the state of California. In the resolution, it says that we do not want to amend the Constitution to allow discrimination. That's really all it says. It's not saying that, any more than that. I think for, there are several things that, as Americans, we need to understand. What are you going to do when you say to Americans, which was very interesting to me when I heard our leader speak, when he said that, you know, "I want to amend the Constitution, but these are fine people and deserving of love and support." Well, fine people, but not deserving of the constitutional guarantees, which are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Those are constitutional guarantees. And the thing is, is that, to take it a step further, to say that, you know, it's taxation without representation. How do you allow people in the country to pay taxes and to be, and then say, "Oh, but you're limited in what you can do and what you can be?" We've already had that experience in our country, when people were three-fifths of a person. And while some people may not see the correlation between the African-American history and what's happening with the gay community, there are similarities. And I think Martin Luther King saw it, obviously, the man was a true visionary and saw things coming. And that's why the movement changed, and perhaps that's why people knew that he had to leave, because it was bringing us together on a different level. And I had the opportunity to talk with Martin Luther King Jr. when he was here a few weeks ago, and someone asked him that very question, you know, about gay marriage, and he didn't have an answer. We spent some time together that evening, and I can guarantee you, he has an answer
Why did I call him?
That's right, because you asked a question. This, one of the things I think that we need to look at also in this community is that we are diverse. And this issue isn't the only issue that will come before us that will create a lot of dialogue. I just want to say thank you to the council for your support of an initiative like this, but also because it gives us an opportunity to speak to so many others about our true belief in our Constitution and in this country, and the full inclusion of all people. And with that, we'll call for the vote. Roll call.
Ms. Fote.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Most enthusiastic, enthusiastically, aye.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess, aye.[1336.33][1336.33](APPLAUSE). It passes unanimously.[1338.33][1338.33](APPLAUSE). Shall we stand, city council? Definitely. So now we can get the council meeting started.
Where are you all going? We've got some more time here.
Where are you all going? We have all this business.
There are a lot of issues on the table.[1395.01][1395.01](LAUGHTER).
Let's give them just a moment to clear the chamber. We got as close to getting it as we could.[1411.15][1411.15](LAUGHTER). Item number 10 has been pulled.
It's been pulled for discussion because I believe there's a conflict. Mayor, you will need to leave the room.
Oh, yes. Are we going to just continue that to the next meeting, or is it time-sensitive? Chris and I both have had conflicts with this, and he's not here. It's Mayor Pro Tem. So do I have to leave, or just abstain?
You should hand over the chair and leave the room if you have a conflict.
Just on that one issue.
It's consent agenda.
Yeah.
No, then they would elect a mayor pro tem.
For right now? Is that easier than just carrying it to the next meeting?
It is time-sensitive in that we can't...
It is time-sensitive? Okay, then we'll have to pull item number 10. I have a conflict, and the mayor pro tem is not present, and he also has a conflict, so I will have to pass gavel. Do you want to do that one first? Yeah, let's just do it first. And we'll have to elect a mayor pro tem for this item, and let me know. I'll return. I have a conflict on item number 10. I'll be leaving the room.
But you have to elect the mayor.
Oh, yeah, I have to elect the mayor pro tem, or do they elect him?
No, they, the city clerk will conduct that.
Yes.
Okay, so you can make a motion. Is there a motion?
A motion to elect a pro tem.
Mm-hmm.
I'll elect Ginny Fote, make a motion to elect Ginny Fote.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Fote.
Pro tem for a minute, right? Well, are we going to vote on the consent calendar for?
Just on number 10.
No, we're going to just do number 10. Okay. I wasn't ready for this.
You can just call for the vote of Madam Pro Tem.
Yeah. Okay, item number 10 is, is there a staff report on item number 10?
Since it was on the consent agenda, it's not required. You could just call for the vote unless council would like...
So even though we're pulling it?
Yes, unless council would like specific detail.
All right. Is there anyone who...
No questions.
Okay, then, no, we need somebody to introduce it.
No, yes.
Just a motion.
Move it.
Motion to approve, not item number 10.
Second.
Vote. Okay, this would be the vote for item 10. Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm relieved of your duty.
Glad you nominated me.
You did that second one quite well.
Okay, we'll move to our other items. Is there any item, any other items that you want pulled, or you have questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I had a correction to the minutes of March 3, and then just some quick questions on items number 6, 8, and 11.
Okay. Let's go to the correction first.
In the page two of the meeting minutes, we have on the second paragraph, "It was moved by Mr. McCullough and seconded by Mr. McCullough." So I don't know what the correction is, but there's a correction there.
He was acting unilaterally.
I was all in favor.
On item number 6, I had a question about PacWest Land Care to the staff. Do they, do we have a larger contract? Do they handle all the medians in the city?
Yes, they are our main contractor for landscaping, parks, medians, things of that nature.
And there are some medians at Alejo and Indian Canyon that continue to have dead palm trees, so I'm wondering how often, we had reported this a couple of weeks. I mean, are they, is there a real measuring system to how they're moving throughout the city?
Yes, it's both complaint-driven and by the contractor, but if there's a specific location, I'd be happy to take care of that issue.
Okay, well, it's Alejo and Indian Canyon.
And the issue are palm...
There are dead palm trees, several. My other question is, are they responsible for the lighting that comes into town?
No.
Okay, that's a separate maintenance issue that we'll talk about later. Thank you, that's item number 6. Item number 8, the quick question was, we have a lot of data, which is pretty startling, up to the year 2000, and I was going to ask the chief of police, this is a great program, do we have any new data on that grant program? Because it's pretty serious stuff in this, this item.
I don't have any data with me at this time.
But I can bring it, at another, at another time, I can give you updates on. Are you asking about drunk driving in particular? Exactly. And if the program, which obviously we don't have to expend our general fund dollars... Right. Is really working in these past three years as well.
It's currently under evaluation, but I can bring that, I can give that to you in a weekly report on the current status and our statistics.
Okay, thank you. And in item number 11, I was quite delighted in the beginning when I was reading this to see that it sounded like we might have a little bit of extra money. But in the end, it looks like there's a little bit of a dispute there. But my question is, in reading the staff report, these items included modifications to the lighting system, footings, and cables. Is there a safety issue here that we might be dealing with, or not?
David, would you please address that? Thank you.
Yeah, no, there isn't any safety issue. The modification was a result of the changes that were made during the construction of the skate park. There's no safety.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just had a question for the chief, who, I don't, did he, oh. Sorry, chief, you're getting your exercise tonight. I just wanted to know on item number 8, which is the agreements with Riverside County Sheriff's Department, if, how long the 2003, 2004 grant will last? And when that runs out, can we renew the grant? And if not, then, and then how are we funding this?
Well, when the grant runs out, if we don't renew this, then we'll discontinue the program. This is, this is a supplement to what we're already doing. So with this, when this expires, this grant runs out, we will be done with this. And it's done on overtime, extra, that's paid for by the grant.
And is it, because I mean, I read the program, and I think it's a great program, and is there a chance of us renewing the grant?
Yes, we have, I think it was just one just came back in from the Office of Transportation and Safety. And we, Sergeant Graham will be looking at this grant to see if we can renew it. But part of it will be to see the success, and that's part of what we have to do, is measure the success of this program and demonstrate that, which will go towards, if we get to apply and continue it.
Good, okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number 5 for some clarification and then a separate vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item 1, with a correction to the minutes, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, there is no, there is no 4.
Yeah. We understand. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And item number 5, staff report, please, or do you just have a question?
I have a question for the city attorney. Could you clarify, when we have votes in closed session, sometimes we just report out, and then it appears, this time, this is coming back to another vote. Could you clarify why this is not just being reported out? This is why we're voting on it again.
You mean on the settlement agreement?
Yes.
At that point in time, you were giving us direction to go negotiate and finalize the terms of the agreement. We didn't know whether it would, whether it would be accepted or not accepted in terms of when we came back, and you sort of gave us a range in terms of negotiating that. So after proceeding with that direction for further negotiations, we achieved something that was within the range. So it's presented back on the council agenda for final action. And by putting it on the agenda, it allows the public to be able to look at the agreement and be informed in terms of what those settlement numbers are.
When, in closed session, we only give direction. So even if there's a number that gives that direction, it's only direction. All the votes take place here. So it's just referred to this, to the legislative items. That, this is where we actually vote.
Okay, thank you.
Move number 5.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Vogt, second by Mr. Pugnay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
No.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. No extended consent agenda. We will move to public hearing, hearing number 13, case RV 0401, Katie Smith and Charles Caci, appeal.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is appeal from the planning commission decision. I would ask Mr. Evans to give the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an item that came to you via the planning commission. This is a RV permit located in a single-family residential zone. This particular RV has been at this site for quite some time. And I moved so much paper around today, and I need to find the staff report. But the RV is located in the front yard. I thought you were going to test me. The RV is located in the front yard, does not comply with the current zoning ordinance requirements. And as such, the planning commission reviewed the proposed application and did recommend denial of it. The key provisions on this particular permit under the RV ordinance is that if an RV is proposed to be located in a front yard, it needs to be screened to the greatest degree possible. It can't exceed 24 feet in length. And in this particular case, this is a 38-foot RV. It literally touches the building on-site and extends all the way out to the property line. We've received numerous complaints about this RV. For a number of years, it comes and goes. The applicants do travel a lot, they're entertainers. So the RV sometimes leaves for weeks, if not months, at a time during certain times of the year. But it does come back. The applicant's position is that they use it. They do not have anybody use it while it's on-site. They do bring their wardrobe and other materials in and out of the house, and they feel it's appropriate to have it on-site. With that quick overview, I will show you the plans and exhibits that we have on file. The property is located in a mid-block condition on this particular block. It's located here. The RV is on the west side of the property. You can see a photograph of the RV here. It extends, you can see a front photograph, the street photograph, and how close it is to the property line. The applicant's proposal to the planning commissioner, or actually to staff, was to park the RV where it's shown in the photographs and bring in some plants and pots to try to screen it around the corner. Due to the size and mass of the RV, staff did deny this application. That did trigger an appeal to the planning commission. The planning commission also denied the application, and the applicants have appealed it. If you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them. That completes our report.
Counsel, are there any questions on the staff report? If not.
Mr. Mayor.
Then I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 13, you will have five minutes. Please come forward, give your name to the clerk. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Charles Caci, and I live at 1055 Poseo El Mirado. I've been there for 33 years in that home. I've never had any problems with anyone on that block. I've literally lived in Palm Springs for almost 50 years. I've owned a motorhome for over 25 years, and I've never had a problem with any of my neighbors. As a matter of fact, I've gotten four or five letters from my surrounding neighbors who, who all agree that the motorhome is beautiful, and they enjoy looking at it. I mean, it's in the picture colony, and my wife and I are entertainers, and we use it for our work. We go on a lot of trips to San Francisco, to San Diego on the West Coast. If we have to go back east, we fly. Now, my request is that the ordinance should be changed, that no man should have the power to have another man remove his motorhome off his property. Now, if you notice, all over Palm Springs, there must be at least 2,000 or 3,000 motorhomes all over the city. And I had my motorhome in storage. Motorhome was damaged. I don't like having it someplace else where I can't watch it. And I'm, you know, and a motorhome of that size has always got to be maintained. Keep it clean and get it ready for the next trip. It's along the side of my house with 30-foot oleanders that you can't even see the motorhome from one side at all. And it does not touch the building, literally. I have to have at least three or four feet so that my gardeners could get behind it and get into my backyard. Now, if I were to put it in my backyard, I'd have to actually demolish my house, half of it, to get into the backyard. I've got it in a gated area. It's within my property line, and it doesn't seem to bother anyone but one person. Now, I don't call it complaining about the ordinance. I think it's harassment, because there are three or four other motorhomes on my block. And it only seems that my motorhome is the one that's bothering them. So if we can do that, or I get a special permit for the motorhome to be put there, and Mr. Evans, I've been talking to him on numerous occasions in Dirk Voss, and I told him I would comply with anything they want us to do. If they wanted us to put artificial flowers or artificial plants that are high on wheels, we can do that. I'm willing to do anything within reason to, to, to resolve this issue. So that's what I'm doing here tonight. And any consideration that you can give us, I'd greatly appreciate. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comments on this issue? If not, then we will close the hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for staff. In my neighborhood, there's one or two relatively large RVs that are sort of tucked in the side yard, and there seems to be some fencing that's sort of partially, I don't know how they back it in there, quite frankly, but is that in compliance with the current code?
The way the code reads, if you can get the RV into your side and rear yard, you don't need a permit if it's screened from the adjoining properties. If it's unscreened, you do need a permit. We issue a few RV permits per year, not very many. In most cases, the RV permits that we get applied for are as a result of code enforcement action. Relative to that, I'm not familiar with your neighborhoods. I couldn't specifically speak about those particular properties.
But how does this case, how is this case different from the ones where the city has made an exception and issued a permit?
Well, the code does have criteria for issuance of a permit. And if a RV meets the criteria, we do issue the permits, and the criteria are outlined in the ordinance. You know, basically, if the RV is parked or stored outside of any required front or side front yard and screened from you from an adjoining property, there's no permit required. So some RVs can be tucked in where they're not seen and no permits required. If you can't comply with that, and you have a RV in a front or side front yard, there's specific findings that the staff has to make to approve the permit, one of which is basically that the RV is no greater than 24 feet in length. So in this particular case, on that one finding alone, since this is a 38-foot RV, staff could not make the finding based upon the size of it. The other finding that you would have to make is that there's no other suitable location on the property for the RV. And you can make that finding if it were to require physical remodeling of the structures, which the applicant has made a case for. His house is built to the side setback lines on both sides. There's no room to slide an RV in the back. So you would have to take down part of the structure to make it comply. The other criteria, you know, really don't apply to this. You can only have one RV permit per parcel. You have to identify the RV vehicle number, and it has to be screened. And this particular case, the planning commission and the staff found that this is a 38-foot-long RV. It's directly in the front yard. It can't be screened. It's large, it's massive. And under those criteria, we could not approve it, nor did the planning commission on appeal feel that they could approve it. I can tell you that within the past several months, I've denied a similar permit. It was on Racket Club Road. It was in response to a code enforcement action. We helped that person by giving him some time to find a buyer for the RV. And we haven't received any complaints that I'm aware of, so I assume the RV has probably moved on. But they claimed the same types of hardship in that they couldn't get it in the side yard without remodeling the property. That's, that's an overview of the existing permit process and ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Pugnay.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff. Mr. Evans, if, in fact, we were to overrule the planning commission, could anything be done at that space to modify or to make it more desirable to the neighbor?
To the complainant, I don't believe anything. This has been ongoing on and off for years. It's a very strong feeling on behalf of the complainant. I don't think we could satisfy the person that's complained on this one.
Are there any things, anything that you could recommend that would make it more desirable? Or is that not possible?
Well, I think the only thing you could do is maybe come in and, and either in pots or possibly redo the driveway. It is a circular drive. And plant, you know, hedge material that could be as tall as the material on the west, because the applicant is absolutely right. From the west, this 38-foot RV is invisible until you get right in front of the property. So you'd have to heavily landscape it to try to screen it. If you tried to do that in pots, in all likelihood, it would look like an RV with a few plants in front of it. On the street side, to actually screen this one, you would have to do it in the right-of-way, because the RV comes right up to the gate. And in fact, I think they have to take the gate off to get it in, and then they put the gate back on the hinges. It's tough to screen it from all directions.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Vogt.
My problem with this is that we have denied requests before, and this is an ordinance, and this would be precedent-setting. I have several recreational vehicles in my neighborhood, and one of the gentlemen around the corner from me actually has built a garage for his. Is there any possibility of enclosing that with another structure? Or is it too close to the property line?
Yeah, it's in the front yard. There's really no room to legally construct a building without a variance for an RV of this size on this particular site.
Thank you.
This is an unfortunate situation. First of all, the, the motorhome is very large, and it doesn't comply, not even to code. But here's, here's a family that has a very good relationship with their neighbors. And if you saw the letters, the neighbors, with the exception of one, they don't mind. They really don't mind. The difficulty, though, is that it really doesn't comply. It isn't so much following with what the one says. It still doesn't comply, and trying to find a way to do so. I think staff has looked at that, and... I think staff has looked at that and so has the planning commission. And I don't see how we can do it. And then if we do so, then not only would we have to change the ordinance, but that really, I think, opens us up for a lot of issues. And this is really unfortunate because obviously, this, you know, this family has maintained a very positive relationship with their neighbors and, you know, and for most of them, it's okay, but we have a different issue to address. And, I mean, from day one, I, when I received these emails, very nasty emails, saying that, you know, "We haven't done anything" and "What we are like because we haven't done anything." And I really hate to respond to it because it's almost like reinforcing negative behavior, but it's not about the behavior. It's really just about our ordinances and whether or not we are going to support our ordinances and our process. And our process has denied it unless we can come up with some other way that I certainly don't see at this point in time. It's been through the system and they don't see a way to do it. So counsel, what is your pleasure?
I move the, I'm moving item 14. I mean 13, excuse me.
The resolution opposed?
Yes.
Is there a second? Row call?
Ms. Fote. Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pounier?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It passes unanimously to oppose the ruling of the planning commission.
Sorry.
Item number 14, Historic Site Preservation Board number 47, Trina Turk and Jonathan Scow, 1995, Camino Monte.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a designation of a Class 1 historic site. It certainly has the support of the inhabitant of the house and the historic preservation. And I always wondered why they called it a ship of the desert and when you go there and they had an open house a month, a couple of months ago, you quickly realize that it is a ship in the desert. With that, if you'd like more specifics on a staff report, Mr. Evans can answer that. However, we would recommend this be granted. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the resolution.
Excuse me. Public hearing item.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Then we will open up the hearing on this matter. Thank you. If anyone who would like to speak to this item, please come forward. You have five minutes. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, move the resolution.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Fote and second by Councilmember Pounier. I'd just like to say that these designations are really important to our community for, in essence, they are really creating museums in our community and preserving very special homes. So thank you very much and to the Historic Site Preservation Board as well. All in favor, I'd be known by saying aye.
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 Carries unanimously. We'll move to item number 15, public hearing, case number 5.0954, Desert Chapel, northwest corner of Sunrise Way and Sunny Dunes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this issue does come back from a previous meeting and there had been some revisions on the conditions of approval and I would ask Mr. Evans to give the staff report before you open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, this item was on your agenda in January. You continued the item to tonight's meeting. On March 4th, we had a community meeting at the direction of the council. 24 individuals and staff attended that meeting. We had a very good, robust discussion, a lot of ideas. Desert Chapel, you know, basically presented their rationale for the project. The neighborhood presented their concerns and several members of the neighborhood brought two alternative site plans before you tonight. And I'll show you the plans. There's an alternative site plan that staff believes meets a number of the concerns of the neighborhood and still maintains the objective of the applicant, and that is to create some single-family homes on Sunny Dunes and an office building on Sunrise Way. Not everybody's concerns were met. Some people just didn't feel that there should be any office buildings. But I think that the majority of people outlined issues and it appeared to staff that this is pretty close. The applicant changes are they've reduced the number of lots by one. So most of the lots are 100 by 100, which matches up to the property to the south. The corner lot is substandard. After we looked at the site plan, we picked that number up, so it's a little bit incorrect in your staff report. It's 90 by 100 and I'll explain why that lot's substandard and they were, you know, basically was they're trying to line up lot lines to the south. The driveway on Sunny Dunes has been deleted, so there would be no direct access from the offices onto Sunny Dunes. The applicant and I believe the neighborhood would like either a break in the median on Sunrise, which is a proposed and required median, or that there be no median at all when the city council approved Desert Chapel master plan across the street. The city council did require a median island on Sunrise. Our major thoroughfares in the general plan do require median islands. From staff's perspective, it's really a policy call. South of Ramon Road, you know, it may be difficult to get the median in all the way down to East Palm Canyon Drive. The Desert Chapel properties will likely be the only projects we can get through the entitlement process or requirement to install the median. Though from a planning perspective, and I believe the traffic engineer's perspective, if we didn't have the median in this location, it probably wouldn't hurt. It's really an aesthetic and a policy call on behalf of the council. The other issue has to do with landscape protection on Sunny Dunes. Staff recommended 25 feet. The applicant proposed 10 feet. Staff recommended 25 because in the P-zone, that's the requirement. And we basically fell back to the most protective aesthetic buffer, you know, the code would require based upon the neighborhood concerns and the applicant would like to address the council on that. And with that quick overview, let me show you the plans. This is site plan five or six that we've looked for this property over a period of years. The plan that you saw at your last meeting is shown here with the residential lots, driveway on Sunny Dunes, parking lot with access connection and one driveway on Sunrise. The revised plan basically shows two driveways on Sunrise, one in the previous location, one in this location. The parking lot does come around and touch the Sunny Dunes property, but with no access. The proposed plan shows a 10-foot setback. Staff recommends a 25, which would line it up with the building. 25-foot setback is what you typically have to streets in the professional zone. It's also the building setback in a residential zone. The applicant is going to request that the council approve a 10-foot setback on the basis that they believe they've been able to generate neighborhood consensus for that by eliminating the driveway. From the standpoint of the residential lots, again, there's only seven instead of eight. The original proposal by the applicant had nine lots, so the planning commission took one away. This process has removed one. And the idea of the lots was really come in and try to pick up the existing lot lines and match them all the way down the street. And when you do that, you just get down to the last one, it's 90 feet. So it's a little bit substandard in one dimension. You could move that and spread it and make them all a little bit substandard. It's really a matter of splitting hairs, probably. Once the lots are subdivided, not many people would see the difference. We believe, you know, after the neighborhood process, that this site plan is probably a good compromise. The fact that, I don't think we're going to have a lot of testimony tonight, although I think we may have warned some people out this time of evening. I think the only real live issues the council's going to hear about tonight is 10-foot or 25-foot median or no median or a median break. The median break probably doesn't work very well because you have a driveway across the street that doesn't align and by the time you do left turns in and out of here, left turns up here, you don't get much landscape. You get what we call is a median snake. That completes our report. I'll certainly try to answer any questions.
In terms of, I have a question. In terms of the turnaround, if you did the 10-foot, I mean 25 feet in this area, would it still be, how would the traffic flow in terms of engineering?
It would still work, it'd work about the same way if this parking lot was full. People would come in, park, come out. These cars here park straight in unless there were open spaces, have a little bit of an awkward movement to come out. But again, this is probably, in this configuration, this is likely to be the employee parking area.
And the 10-foot versus the 25, is a reduction in how many parking spaces?
It would, 25-foot would reduce, if you pushed, if you made the full 25-foot setback, it would eliminate this row of parking here. If you made it a 19-foot setback, you could eliminate a couple and still have it work, but you'd have, you'd have a 19-foot setback instead of 25. And obviously, the applicant's preference is a 10-foot setback. So there's three options that you could look at. All are workable.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we open the hearing?
Mr. Evans, is there also, I remember in the original plan, there was a block wall along the back of the homes that was proposed to separate this property from the...
From the mobile home park?
The mobile home park. Is that in this plan?
All the previous conditions or recommendations are still in the staff report. I do have some revised conditions. They're really simple. It really affects only two. It's a legislative draft and it deletes one condition regarding a driveway on Sunny Dunes and then a revision regarding adding or allowing two driveways on Sunrise Way. So if you were to approve it, we'd recommend you make these two changes. They're pretty straightforward and they just make the conditions match up with the site plan.
And those two were what? I'm sorry.
Well, the two listed here have to do with eliminating the driveway.
Okay.
Here and adding a driveway. And then a third and fourth item you might have to consider would be, you know, the setback on Sunny Dunes and the median island. And after the public hearing, based upon council direction, we can help you craft a motion.
Okay, thank you. There's, I have, this is, I have two cards. Steve Russell, if you'll please come forward. Followed by Peter Introvatarlo. Good evening. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Steve Russell, as you just said. I live at 1425 East Sunny Dunes Road. I'm directly across with Peter from the corner lot at Amigo. And I wanted to just start by saying at the last council meeting on this project on January 21st, there was some confusion, I think, regarding the existing zoning of the property. As it exists now, the property, the full length of Sunny Dunes Road is R1, single-family residential. And from approximately 100 feet north of Sunny Dunes Road, along Sunrise Way, is medium density. At the January 21st council meeting, council directed the Desert Chapel and adjacent neighbors to go back and come up with a compromise proposal that will meet the needs of the chapel and the neighborhood. On February 26th, my partner Peter and I invited some of our neighbors also directly impacted by this project to meet at our home to develop a compromise plan that we felt we could accept. We took this plan to the open house that was set up by Alex Meyerhoff and Lejosfalt and presented it to the Desert Chapel representatives and the people from the neighborhood. Robert Hazucha also worked with an architect and came up with an alternate plan. Based on the concerns and proposals presented by the people of the neighborhood, the Desert Chapel revised their proposal to mitigate some of the concerns of the neighborhood while also meeting their own needs. We understand that there are some concerns that the city has primarily, which is the median strip and the 25-foot setback on the property. I would also like to say that during Mr. Evans' presentation of the staff report on this project in January 21st council meeting, he said that it is very likely that the Desert Chapel will occupy some, if not all, of the professional buildings. Just as a note, we've heard no denial to this from the Desert Chapel. At the February 18th council meeting regarding football, Mr. Mayor, you told the Desert Chapel that they are likely to outgrow their campus and they may have to consider moving. At the February 10th meeting with the Desert Chapel and neighborhoods, that was another one presented by the planning department, Barbara Beatty, who's a teacher at the chapel, said that they are growing and the school administration wants growth. Mr. Mayor and council members, the neighbors and the Desert Chapel did compromise on a plan, but please keep this growth in mind when you consider your approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And Peter? You'll have five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Peter Introvatarlo and I live directly opposite the property with Steve at 1425 East Sunny Dunes Road. As a retired civil administrator for the County of King in Seattle, I understand the need for compromise to work out solutions to ensure quality services that the public expects. Removing obstacles to ensure 24/7 services for the public was my responsibility. 3,000 employees in my division, 99% of whom were represented by different labor agreements, made it my job always interesting, as did bringing in my $125 million budget every year. Consequently, what was said at the January and February council meeting concerning Desert Chapel was loud and clear in my ears. In January, councilperson Pounier said concerning this proposal that he was making a motion for 60-day postponement so that the neighborhood and planning department could formulate a plan to bring the Desert Chapel proposal to fruition. At the February council meeting, Mr. Mayor, you said that the neighborhoods had not followed your instructions concerning chapel night football games. You wanted compliance criteria established. The proposal for the night games was passed. Compromise and making the proposals work were the issues in question. It was loud and clear. Now, let's go back and look at the original chapel proposal for this property. There are three elements. The first, eight residential lots on Sunny Dunes, all 20% less than the low-density floor zoning requirement. The planning commission reduced that to seven, still all less than the L4 lot size requirement. Two, the M15 land along Sunrise Way would be changed to professional designation, removing it from residential status. Three, 2 and 1/3 of the low-density floor lots along Sunny Dunes would be removed from residential zoning to professional designation. The two latter changes would be done to accommodate three professional services buildings with 18 parking stalls with one port on Sunrise Way and one on Sunny Dunes. 52% of the land would be changed from residential. What did the neighborhood want? Well, we wanted to maintain the integrity of the residential neighborhood by keeping the low-density floor-sized lots along Sunny Dunes itself. We wanted no increase in traffic in the neighborhood. We wanted no increase in traffic in the neighborhood caused by a port on Sunny Dunes due to any professional buildings. And our third concern was a review of the general plan since approval of the chapel proposal would set precedence for the future. What do you see in the revised chapel proposal before you tonight? Somewhat of a compromise. Desert Chapel has agreed that six of the seven lots on Sunny Dunes will be L4 required size and will mirror the lots on the south side of the street. The seventh will be only 9,200 square feet, but they will get all seven lots as they requested. All of the M15 land will go to the professional zoning and two of the Sunny Dune lots will also go to that designation. The chapel still wants its three professional buildings and is willing to close the Sunny Dunes port and put two ports on Sunrise. So instead of the 52% of the land changing from residential, only 47% will change. Do I like this new proposal? No. The neighborhood met and said they would like eight residential lots mirroring those on the south side of Sunny Dunes. The neighborhood was willing to give on the M15 land and the 1L4 lot facing Sunrise Way. Do I believe the neighborhood can live with this proposal? Yes. As long as the parking lot wall on Sunny Dunes is set back sufficiently so that it can be landscaped and as long as the council, council members agree to modify the meridian or median on Sunrise Way, I think it's provision 58, to allow traffic to exit north from the P-zone area and thus minimize the risk of increased traffic in the Sunny Dunes neighborhood. One last observation about this proposal. Mr. Mayor, at the February 18th council meeting, you mentioned that the chapel should know that sooner or later, they would outgrow their campus. This, almost done. This proposal gives them that opportunity. But as Mr. Evans said, and the January meeting, excuse me, the January meeting, the church or the chapel is going to move into these buildings. So it's going to benefit the students if they do get this property one way or the other so that they can free up land over in the chapel campus itself. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concern.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I did receive from a gentleman right before the meeting, these plans and specifications that I put over here that I spoke to you about earlier. So I would like to give them to the council for review. There's only three of them and I'll need one of them back for the record.
Okay. Good evening. Please give your information to the clerk. You'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Sean Wood and I'm going to speak on behalf of Desert Chapel and keep it very brief. We believe, and first of all, we want to thank everybody for the opportunity to come to compromise the council and especially the staff as well as the neighborhood. We believe that we have worked out a reasonable compromise with regard to the issue of the median on Sunrise. We believe it would be important to eliminate the median so you can turn to go north on Sunrise, which would eliminate people going south and then automatically going up Sunny Dunes, which we believe is one of the main concerns of the neighborhood, to eliminate as much traffic as possible on Sunny Dunes. So we would just like to ask the council to approve the amended plan as presented. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome. You'll have 30 seconds.
Mayor and council.
Five minutes more.
It's all I need. Marvin Russett, Manero Smith, and it says that we helped put the revised plan together. What we did on the parking was to try to create kind of a mini little cul-de-sac at the end. So there's about a 50-foot circle, so there's cars parked around it so you can get around. If we were to eliminate one space, it would give us a total of 19 feet of distance to the parking. What we wouldn't eliminate the strip though, we would eliminate one because we could push it then up, just push one of the west-facing stalls at the, at the west side of the lot. So that would help. And again, we've, the, the building gets smaller because of the parking unless we can come up with another space. So that's what we were trying to do is to, so when you got all the way down there, you didn't get like stuck. So there's enough room to get turned around so that you can get out. So, and if you have any other questions on the map or the PD, I'd be glad to try to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Like to speak in this public hearing? Please come forward.
Thank you very much. We, the plan that's on the map, the map that's on the wall now, the tract map that we have is a result of compromise. It's a result of listening to people. It's a result of your staff doing a good job and helping us to listen to each other. And what I would ask of the council tonight in regard to, to, I was listening to the changes that were offered. Removal of the median entirely, actually, I believe helps the whole neighborhood. With a median in there, people will turn right out of the property and just turn right down Sunny Dunes and they'll have the same problem they probably would have had if we had an entrance on Sunny Dunes. So I would ask that your, for your approval of the tract map as presented with the deletion of the requirement of the median on Sunrise Way would be our request. And in regard to the setback, it's drawn at 10 feet. That does allow, we did agree with the neighbor, spoke with the neighbor who's directly across from that. That person looked at this map and, and shook my hand and said, "Thank you." We told him we'd involve them in the landscaping and they, she looked at me, she said, looked at me in the eye and said, "We appreciate what you've done and we can, we are happy with this drawing." And that's the level of detail we went into in trying to find a, a community compromise. And you could tell by the responses tonight and the lack of thereof that I feel that, that we've tried to do that and we appreciate your encouragement of that process. So that's our request this evening. Thank you.
And thank you. Good evening and welcome. You'll have five minutes.
Thank you. Joan Martin. I'm delighted that everyone is thinking no median. I don't have to even say anything. That was clearly the most workable plan and I'm very happy. I'm also frozen. And when I mentioned earlier that I was cold, everyone was very interested, but it's still very cold in here. Regarding that setback, I would be interested to know why such a short one? What needs or perceived needs does that meet for Desert Chapel? The 25 is clearly more graceful and more neighborhood-friendly. And so I really would like to know, does it take away critical number of parking places? Does it change the operation of the traffic so that they have a real problem? I'm under-informed on this and I would definitely vote for the 25. Would be a very nice gesture on their part to give us 25. Thank you.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this public hearing? Then we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pugnay.
Just another quick question for staff. Mr. Evans, could you tell me again what staff recommends for the median?
Well, the, you know, the, the planning commission made a recommendation to put the median in. Projects changed a little bit. The general plan says on major thoroughfares, we should have a median. And discussing this with Dave Barakian today, I think both of us would not object to deleting the median requirement in this particular case. And if you want to do that, that is condition number 58. So just deleting 58 to your motion.
Doug, if I could, just for clarification, if council approves this, then this would be, they would be foregoing median islands on Sunrise, south of Ramon, forever? This would change that dynamic?
Yeah, you would be deleting the requirement. You could defer it by covenant if you wanted to ever try to do it. Desert Chapel across the street is required to construct it. You know, sometime we'll have to fix that. So you could just take number 58 and say defer by covenant. They would then have to enter into an agreement to construct the, the median when and if. Either way, I don't think staff is particularly concerned.
Since there's no future development in that, in that other distance, then it would mean that we would have to put them in?
Well, in, adjacent to the Desert Chapel property, they would have to put it in. That would be a very small percentage in this one-mile stretch. The rest would be public improvement.
Are there any other questions, council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Let's vote.
I'm a little bit confused by, by these plans. But these were submitted, it has, it has a cover letter. Were these, yeah, no, I know the two up on the, on the wall. Were these considered by, by the Desert Chapel or by staff? I don't, I'm, I'm not understanding why we have these or why they're up there.
Yeah. I, in, in the interest of the time, I didn't go through and present those to you and I apologize. At our neighborhood meeting, those two diagrams, and they're on the far right on the boards, were submitted by several of the neighbors to this project. They were alternatives. One has a driveway that comes out at Sunny Dunes, although closer to the intersection, but eliminates the amount of parking that goes to down Sunny Dunes. The other one increases the size of a building on Sunny Dunes. They were just project alternatives that I think stimulated a very good discussion with Desert Chapel and the neighbors that resulted in this revised project.
Okay. And I'm a little bit unclear then how, how we would vote on this. If we, if we, if we're deferring by covenant, item, let's see, that would be item 58. 58, was it?
Yes.
Yeah, 58. And then we were in favor of the staff suggested setback and were in favor of the project, then how do we, how do we do that vote?
You'd make a motion to adopt the, the resolution and add a defer by covenant to condition 58. And the rest of the items, you do not have to affect. There's no other need. Everything else is in the, the recommendations that you have before you with those minor edits that I passed out.
And the 25-foot setback is there?
25-foot is already in the, the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? I would just like to...
With the defer by covenant of 58.
Yes.
And setback.
Can I, both agree with that?
A little more explanation on the defer by covenant. We kind of ran through that pretty quickly. What exactly does that mean? I didn't understand if we don't, if we, if we disallowed the median, if we said we don't want it, that, that goes for the whole stretch all the way to East Palm Canyon and, but we're avoiding that by this? Could you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah.
No, means...
The, the way it's, it's set up right now, if you were to adopt the resolution the way it was presented, this project would have to build the median and it would be the same time that it would make sense for Desert Chapel Church Campus to build the median. It would be a small stretch of median in a one-mile length of Sunrise Way from East Palm Canyon to Ramon. By deferring it to covenant, they would still, the property owner would be obligated in the future, if we ever built a median in that length, they would be obligated for their cost adjacent to their property. So it becomes an encumbrance on the property. It's a when and if type issue. And I would not anticipate the city would come in and call the covenant unless we were going to do a median project that started probably at Ramon and went virtually all the way to at least Mesquite, if not East Palm Canyon Drive. And I don't think we have median projects scheduled like that on this type of road in the near-term future.
City Attorney, please, Mr. Shaw.
One thing, because with the new council, some of these issues you're kind of getting for the first time. When somebody's building a project, they will go out and get a loan and as a part of the development of that project and borrowing that money, there's money to potentially build a median. When you defer by covenant, we have a legal right to come back and tell them at a, at a later point in time, gee, there's a covenant, you have to do this. But at that point in time, you may be dealing with a totally different property owner who's just kind of conducting a normal business and suddenly they've got to pay some significant amount of money towards improving a median strip that, as we heard with Sunrise Norte, gee, I never saw that covenant, I didn't know it was there. So I just, we can defer by covenant and record a covenant against the property, but it, it can be a real major hassle 10 years from now when that project's finally happening to go after the property owner and try and enforce terms of the covenant, just so you're aware of it.
Thank you. I would just like to say to Steve Russell and Peter Introvatarlo that I know you only represent members of the community, but you certainly worked on what we asked you to do and you did come back to us with the compromise. And I'd like to also thank Desert Chapel as well for working with the community. And I think that this is something that obviously we can all live with. So with that, council, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will move to item number 16.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This issue is the comprehensive fee schedule amendment to development fees. We had talked about this issue many times over the last several months. What's before you is the culmination of those efforts by staff and members in the development community and the EDC to bring before you this fee increase. The, the importance of this whole issue this evening for us is a couple-fold. One, as you know, the general fund subsidizes the whole development services operation, which in the constraints of our budget and what we will see, is not a good situation. Second of all, the whole issue of the development services process, this will be the linchpin to making those improvements occur. Everything from the additional personnel, including the concierge, the concierge, to the electronic permitting and online tracking of the e-government process that we hope to install into the whole development services area. Again, these will pay for those improvements. And finally, I would just like to remind you that we have been very sensitive to the issue of raising the fees as a balance to not being too overly high as which would discourage development. So the combination of all those three things is what is before you today. And I would ask Mr., it's Troy, Mr. Bootsloff. Doug is going to actually pass out. He has a summary sheet of the fees before and after. It's, you've seen these numbers before, they're in the extended matrix. This is just a quick summary sheet that will help you follow along. And with that, I would ask Mr. Bootsloff to give you a little more detail on what we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy, members of the city council. This public hearing represents the culmination of approximately five months of intensive work by city staff and its consultant, Muni Financial. In addition, city staff and its consultant have worked extensively with the local, local BIA to try to make sure that the fees that are being proposed tonight reflect the industry's concerns and also have addressed some of their issues that they've raised throughout the, the meetings that have been held. Since this has been presented at a study session in January, I'm not going to belabor the council tonight with the details of the fee study itself, but I would like to cover a few salient issues. The city's consultant, Muni Financial, has prepared the development user fee study, which is attached to the council staff report. This fee study calculates... This fee study calculates the full cost of providing various development-related fees. The study identified and assigned cost to over 75 existing, new, or modified fee services. In most cases, the consultant found that current fees do not cover the actual costs incurred by the city. In fact, based on the consultant's findings, the general fund is currently subsidizing development activities by as much as $452,000 a year. While the city could recover 100% of its cost of providing the services that it performs, staff is recommending that certain fees be set at less than 100%, when in staff's opinion, the higher fee would adversely affect the community. And this was raised at the city council study session back in January. For example, fees for garage sale permits, appeals, minor administrative modifications have all been set or being proposed to be set at lower than 100% cost recovery. I would like to take a little bit of time to explain the fee tables that are included in the actual fee study. The fee tables provide the cost of the service, the current fee that is charged, the amount of subsidy that the city is currently subsidizing the fee for, and the recommended fee. In addition, it shows two different fee levels of 80% and 90% of cost recovery. We've also compared those fees, both the fees that are being proposed and the current fees, to the fees charged by other valley cities here in the Coachella Valley, as well as the county of Riverside. The summary chart that Mr. Evans just passed out takes the current fees for the various service or applications that the city has a fee for, as well as shows the recommended fee that is being recommended by the city's consultant. I would like to mention a few of the fees that are being proposed that are not currently in the fee schedule. For example, annexation to Palm Springs is a new fee that's being recommended. This would be charged at the cost of doing that particular annexation study. Another fee that's being added is a categorical exemption fee. This is a fee that would be charged for anybody who's processing a categorical exemption. That fee's being proposed at $170. In addition, final landscaping, exterior lighting, this is a new fee, this is being proposed at $480. Some fees that are being recommended for deletion in the fee study include, if I can find it here.
Mitigation monitoring.
I'll get to that in a minute. Under Table 1, this would be the, under subdivision maps, final track maps and final parcel maps are both being recommended to be deleted. One fee that does show in here that should have been deleted, and this was brought to my attention this evening by Mr. Kibbe from the BIA, is the mitigation monitoring. That should have not been included in the summary chart, and we are recommending that that be deleted from the fee schedule and not be adopted. Two fees that are also being recommended tonight, one is a technology enhancement fee. This particular fee would be charged on every building permit. The fee that's being recommended is $1.30 per $1,000 of new construction valuation. This particular fee would be used to offset the city's anticipated cost of providing new technologies in the development services department. For example, the e-government solution that the city is currently considering, which will be brought back to the city council in the near future, has a price tag associated with it of approximately $225,000. In addition to that, there are a number of other hardware and software costs that the city has incurred and will continue to incur that we feel very confidently should be passed off to the development community to pay for the services that we render. And under state law, the city can pass these costs over to the development community to recover its cost for providing the services. One additional fee that the city staff is recommending is a general planned maintenance fee. This particular fee would be assessed for the maintenance of the city's general plan and its various elements of that plan, so that the city can continue to update that plan on the periodic cycle that it has to be updated. I'd also like to mention a couple of things relative to the resolution that's before you tonight and some of the mechanics of that particular resolution. If the city council approves the resolution, which will adopt the Comprehensive Development Fee, User Fee Study, as well as direct the city clerk to amend the fee schedule to put these fees into effect, the actual effective date of these fees will be 60 days from the effective date of the resolution. The reason for this additional tolling period is to allow the development community to be properly informed of the new fee schedule, so that they are aware that these fees will go into effect on a date certain. Part of this, during this tolling period, staff will post both the new fee schedule as well as circulate the adopted fee schedule to the development community, so that they are aware of the fees that will go into effect. I also like to mention that the fees that are going to be recommended tonight as part of the fee schedule will have an automatic adjustment in July of every year. This will begin in the year 2005, and the adjustment will be based on the change in the CPI from the prior year. Finally, I'd like to mention, because there may be some concern relative to the fees that are going to be recommended tonight and when they do go into effect, whether or not somebody who's in the development queue, so to speak, how they could be affected by this. Anybody who submitted an application currently, their fees would stay under the current fee schedule. Anybody who hasn't applied, after the 60-day tolling period has expired, they would be assessed the new fee. The resolution does power provide for an appeal process, or a process rather, that anybody can request an adjustment, waiver, or reimbursement of the fees that are being charged. So if somebody feels that the fee that is being charged is, if they have, for example, put in an application and the tolling period has expired, and they feel that because of some delay on the city's part, that they shouldn't be assessed the higher fee, they can come before the city council and request a reimbursement or a waiver of the fees that are going into effect. So there is a mechanism to allow for individuals who are presently considering putting in an application before the city to get some sort of relief in the fact that if they do provide an application within that 60-day period, and we do not process their application within that 60-day period, they can receive an adjustment or waiver of the fees that are going to go into effect after that 60th day. Other than that, members of the city council, Mr. Wakefield, the city's consultant, is available to help describe the approach that was taken in the study. He can also explain any of the calculations or fees that are being recommended. I would also like to take this opportunity to personally thank Mr. Kibbe for his hard work on this. He did work with staff and the consultant closely on trying to make sure that the fees that were being recommended tonight to council represented not only our views and recommendations for what we feel is the cost of the services that we provide, but also were sensitive to the development community as well. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that staff report. It's two, what, three minutes to 11:00, and we have to make a decision here about continuing. I'm okay if you want to continue. But I need a break.
You're feeling okay, Mr. Mayor?
I'll make it. So we'll need to entertain a motion to continue.
So moved.
I have a motion.
You're okay?
Yeah. Just need a break.
I'll second, since the mayor says he's feeling okay.
Is there a timeframe on that motion, Mayor?
We have a second. Do you need a roll call for that? Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pounay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. However, we need to take a break at this point. So we'll come back.[1098.15]
We will continue.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to finish this discussion on the fees.
Okay.
Because we have our consultant here in Mr. Kibbe. What we'd like to do is move everything else to next week's adjourned meeting with the exception of the White Party 15, the Vietnam Veterans Wall waiver fees, and the Convention Center contracts.
That will be fine.
Thank you.
Counselor Cleonette?
So if we could continue with the fee discussion. Our staff report is completed. Mr. Mayor, we just await counsel's questions and discussions. And the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, then we will open our public hearing at this time. Anyone who would like to speak in this public hearing item, please come forward. You'll have five minutes. Mr. Kibbe? Good evening, welcome, and thank you.
Good evening. We had a good time this evening. I will say that. Thank you very much to staff for working with us on that. I have just a couple of comments. We have the new general plan fee of 61 per thousand. And we also have the technology enforcement fee. And I would request that some language be placed in the resolution that direct staff to account for these separately. And that it would be the sense of the council that the monies collected on those two would only be spent on those two. And the reason I have a concern is there is language in the resolution that states that all monies raised in this will be put in the general fund for support of the general requirements.
Okay.
And since these are two specific fees for two specific reasons, if we could get some wording in there just to say that it's the sense of the council that these will be kept separate and the monies would be spent only on those items. Now, speaking to that, it's interesting in the technology enhancement fee, and I spoke to Troy about this, and he said, well, things went up. And I said, well, it would have been nice to know, but when I finished my discussion with the city staff a couple of weeks ago, that fee was at 73 cents. It has now increased to $1.30. And all of a sudden, all of these costs increased dramatically. I have a problem with that. I think that we ought to stick with the 73 until such time as staff comes forward with justification for the higher fees. Because they said to me, this is what they needed. I looked at it, studied it, and said, okay, that's reasonable. Now, all of a sudden, it's been doubled. I'd just like to go ahead and adopt that at 73 cents, which is the original report, until such time as staff comes forth with justification for the higher fee. And one final thing, as Troy mentioned, there is verbiage that annually on July 1st, 205, and every year thereafter, it can be increased according to the Consumer Price Index. I would like to put a limit of three years on that, and then a new study be made. Now, the argument is, and I've been making this to all of the entities, the reason this increase is so large is because your city hasn't increased the fee in, what, 10 years? Something like that. And we've been urging all entities, not more than every three years, to re-study and do the increase, so that it's not this huge increase. You look at these, these are big increases. So I'd like you to put in there a limitation of, for three years, you could have that automatic, but then you got to go ahead and do a new study and see what the fees are, and so on. And in that regard, I would also like a sense of the council that the staff would keep track of the time spent. The industry has said, okay, staff, for this time, you're saying you spend this much time, you spend this much time without any real definitive record-keeping to support it. And I'd like to see records kept on how much time it takes to do the various functions, so that when, in three years, that you come up for that re-evaluation, you're not coming forward with estimates of staff, you're coming forward with specific information that it takes three hours to do whatever it is. Right now, it's kind of a guess. We'll buy off on that because of all this time and everything, but we'd like in the future to have some exacting information. Once again, thank you very much for staff for your cooperation. We appreciate it. And counsel, we appreciate your looking to our concerns. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Kibbe. We appreciate the time that you've given to us in a consulting capacity. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Fold has a question for you, if you please come back.
My question was, where does this put us in the sphere of cities in the Coachella Valley?
It's generally about right. However, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, it's nice to compare, and it's nice to, if all of a sudden you're real high and you say, well, we better back off the 100% and get down to 80 so we'll be competitive. But the law says that your fees cannot exceed the actual cost of providing the service. But to answer your question, I think you'd be right about the middle, I think, of the rest of the valley, so you're not out of whack. The whole thing with the industry is to go through and make sure that these are legal and that they are fair. They are legal and they are fair. And that's what we ask. And given that, that's cool.
Yeah, because some of these increases are staggering, but...
Well, they're huge, but that's because it's been roughly 10 years, and the cost of doing business has gone up a lot in that time. But we don't want to do this again. We want to make sure that, if you would, just add that three-year limitation on that automatic increase, that it has to be re-studied again in three years. And then we get a gradual increase as it goes along, and nobody's hurt. Because there's going to be some folks hurt, but the nice thing about it is those who have their material and their paperwork and everything like that, they're not going to get stuck on this. So there is some wiggle room there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, counsel? We'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like staff to respond to the items that Mr. Kibbe mentioned, specifically the potential restriction of the two funds, the technology from 73 cents to $1.30, the three-year review, and...
And the tracking evaluation.
Tracking of the records. So if, Troy, you could respond.
Sure, I can try to... Let me take the technology fee first. When we first did our technology fee calculations, that was done back in September, October of last year, we were using information preliminary data from both the eGovernment consultant and from some other consultants to generate the cost calculations for that particular fee. Since that time, a lot has changed. We've revised our numbers. We got new estimates from our eGovernment consultant showing us what the actual cost of the e-government permitting system would cost the city. And as a result, that impacted the fee amount that's being proposed tonight. It went from 73 cents, as Mr. Kibbe indicated, to $1.30. That is to cover the approximate $375,500 in costs that the city anticipates and incurring for technology purposes in the Development Services Department. Based on a $1,000, on the $1,000 per valuation assessment, the actual fee amounts to about $5.20 on a $4,000 patio cover, $260 on a $200,000 single-family residence, and $1,950 on a $1.5 million office building. So it's really not a considerable fee in light of the amount of technology it's going to purchase and the fact that it will help improve the services that we offer to the community and to the developers who are seeking permits. So I hope that explains the technology fee. With respect to the use of the fee revenues, the actual resolution, Section 4 of that resolution specifies how the revenues have to be used. There's language in there that the revenues are used to pay for basically the capital cost and labor and contract costs directly or indirectly associated with providing the requested service. I would be more than happy to accommodate Mr. Kibbe's request and suggest that maybe the counsel could add into that language after capital cost, capital cost of acquiring new technology, and then add another statement at the end of that sentence that basically says the technology fee and the general plan maintenance fee shall be tracked separately, and revenue raised from that fee shall be used to pay for the technology or the maintenance of the general plan, something to that effect. And we can work out the language, but I think the general intent is so that those particular fees are used specifically for either technology or for the maintenance of the general plan. Now, it does state in that section I just read that the fees or the revenues raised from the payment of these fees, as well as any interest earned from those revenues, shall be used to pay for the city's administrative costs spelled out in the study. So the study itself spells out how those fees are to be used. The general plan maintenance fee is clearly called out what it's to be used for. The enhancement fee for technology also clearly called out on how it's supposed to be applied. So I think with those added protections, I hope that would satisfy Mr. Kibbe and the BIA that we would use those fees specifically for those particular purposes. With respect to the three-year review, Section 5 of that same page talks about the subsequent analysis of the fees. Certainly, we would recommend that we just continue to apply the CPI adjustments on an annual basis until such a time as we feel that we need to go back and revisit the fees and maybe do another fee study. It is costly to do a fee study. This is something that cities don't do on a two- or three-year cycle. They typically wait five-year periods to do fee studies like this. As a matter of fact, I believe under AB 1600, we're required to do a five-year analysis of our fees to make sure that our fees are truly in line with the cost of the services that are provided. So I would be more comfortable recommending a five-year, but if we need to provide for a three-year review, I think language can be inserted in this section here under Section 5, subsequent analysis of the fees, that basically says that every three years or five years, whatever the council directs us to do, we would do another study to update the fee schedule. And was there another question, councilman?
The fourth point was just keeping records and tracking.
Well, I think it's more of an administrative function, and obviously, the Development Services Department in conjunction with the finance staff would make sure that the fees that are collected are properly tracked, and we would provide reports as to what is being collected and how that money is being used.
Thank you.
Inasmuch as we haven't purchased this equipment at this point, the new tracking... What is it?
E-government.
Yeah, the e-government. If we were to approve at the 73 and then later change once we made that purchase, what would be the process?
City Council can update the fee schedule at any time. It just simply takes a resolution, much like what we've done tonight. Of course, we would have to have a public hearing again for that particular increase in the fees. So if the council would like to set it at the $73, or 73 cent mark now, we can certainly update it at some future date should we determine that additional fees are necessary.
Well, I'm concerned because we don't have a full report. We don't know... We know what it will cost us initially, but since so much of the program will need to be adapted specifically to our use, we don't really know what the full total of that's going to be. So I would suggest that we wait it until we at least had a full report before amending the fee schedule to accommodate something that we don't currently have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to go out a slight bit on limb here and recommend strongly to the council that you approve that as it is. This is the cornerstone of what we're trying to do, and I would hate to hamstring and tie our hands because all the other regulations... What this bureaucracy has is we got a hand tied behind our backs and a gag over our mouth and our feet tied, and then we say to our people, go ahead and do your job. And what we're trying to do is untie and unbind and let us get this done. Now, we can be certain that the cost of this includes several components, not the least of which is the technology, but it also includes changing the space that we have that's going to be part of that technology. And what that comes down to is, all those expenditures will come to the city council for your approval. Any of those that you feel are not necessary, we will not do. But finally, in the end, it would be easier to reduce the fee than to try to raise it later time. That's just my recommendation. Thank you.
And I appreciate your recommendation. I'm just a little concerned about raising fees on a service that we don't currently And that's just my understanding on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might add, because this fee is going to be collected over time, it's going to take a long time to generate enough revenues to offset the city's future cost of this technology. We're likely to bring back to you within 30 days a staff report recommending the e-government system. Right now, there's not money budgeted to pay for that system, so if city council were to authorize us to do that, the money needed for that would have to come out of fund balance. So this is a fee that can be used to generate and offset the city's cost for acquiring that system. There's other costs in here that, right now, we don't have the money for and would not likely be able to budget for in light of our fiscal condition to provide cell phones for building inspectors, code enforcement officers, to provide the necessary technology for us to do the job and serve the community. So I think setting the fee at the $1.30 level provides us an opportunity, and certainly, if we don't go through with the e-permitting system or something else changes, we can always lower it at a future date.
So if we could lower it a few... All right, I appreciate your recommendation. I have a philosophical issue with charging for something that we don't possess, a service that we aren't currently providing. So, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, if I just... And I understand that, that's fine, but I just want to make sure the council understands that we will be coming to council asking for approval of these expenditures from dollars we do not have yet, from fund balance in essence, with the idea of collecting over time. And I just want to make sure counsel is aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that brings up one of my questions that I had, was have you projected out at what point the fees will catch up with the expenses? In other words, we're adding staff, and we're adding e-government, and we're adding all of these things, which, by the way, the last... If my memory serves me correct, it wasn't $375,000 for e-government that we heard in the presentation, but that's another issue. Have you projected out at what point we will be whole on this and then start to be taking in money to cover?
We have not done any projections or forecasts as to when we'll become whole. It's obviously depended on development activity, so we can make some reasonable assumptions that with the current development trend under the proposed fee structure, that the city will start to reach a cost recovery of the services that we provide, but it's going to take some time to reach that. If this development trend continues, we'll obviously continue to make up for the cost of the services that we provide. Generally speaking, however, it's going to take a period of time before we start to see any of those revenues, because, one, you have a 60-day tolling period before any of these fees can go into effect, and then after that, it's going to take time to start recovering the cost of the services that we provide. Certainly, the staff costs are going to start to be recovered immediately, but some of the technology and other costs that we're going to be doing as part of the reorganization of development services are not going to be captured immediately.
Well, I'm trying to understand where... I mean, you have to have done some projections out, because we have so many projects already in development, so many large projects. And if these new fees are not going to affect projects like... Or maybe they are, maybe I'm misunderstanding, when that starts, like the classic project, will these new fees affect that huge project?
It depends on where the classic project is, and I'm not familiar with where it is currently in the development queue, but for projects that are currently in process now, where they've submitted an application, these fees would likely not affect them unless they are going to reach a point in time, like, for example, they're going to be pulling building permits on the 61st day after this particular resolution is enacted, then they would pay the higher fee. So some projects will, by the very nature of where they are, probably be immune from having to pay the increased fees. Some projects, however, depending on where they fall in the development queue, may have to pay the higher fee, and future projects after the 60th day will pay the higher fee.
Well, we're kind of developed out in a lot of senses in so many projects already being in the queue. And so that's what I'm trying to understand. If the projects that are in the queue now, like if I use the classic project for an example, the fees, the raising of the fees then become retroactive to the new things that they propose or the permits that they pull?
No, state law precludes us from making these fees retroactive. They have to be forward-thinking, they have to be in advance so that the development community has some knowledge of the fees that are being imposed. That's why there's a 60-day tolling period by which the fees can be imposed. So anybody who's currently in the process now will not necessarily assess the higher fee depending on where they are in that process. And maybe Mr. Evans can jump in here and help out with some of the larger projects and where they are in the process to give you a sense of how they may be assessed the new fees.
And I can see he's ready to jump in.
Yes. To use the classic as a quick example, they've already paid for all their planning entitlement fees. They're through that. They don't have to pay those again. As they come in with pieces of the project that we've not seen before, the actual out-of-the-ground development, the homes, the condominiums, apartments, maybe a hotel, when we start reviewing those new parts of the project that we really haven't seen the plans on because all we've approved to date really is a land plan, the new fees as appropriate would apply. And obviously, any plan checking that we do, the new fee for plan checking would apply. So they would have to pay the new fees. And I'm not sure they've gone through and calculated, you know, every future fee, you know, from every piece of it, because actually, the classic developer, Lennar Corporation, may or may not do any of the actual out-of-ground development. They're land developers at this point. In my discussions, they weren't going to actually build the buildings, they were going to look for other builders to come in and build pieces. So those particular pieces of the project, we haven't seen yet, so we would assess the new fee to review that part of the project.
So then, projects that are in the queue, as they move through different phases, will be assessed the new fees?
The new fee.
So then, I think it, I think it would be easy to figure out at what point, because it would give me a better sense, at what point we stop taking money from the general fund and we start funding the, the things like e-government and, and, and additional staff and all of that. At, at what point does that happen? Does that happen in two thousand and five or does it happen in two thousand and twenty? Because I, I think that's an important thing for us to look at.
What I can, can tell you, Council, and that, that's a good question. It, it's a two-part answer. One is, it's all based on guesses, for the one. So depending upon what happens with development.
Well, budgeting is a guesstimate.
Indeed. But the educated part of this guess is, what we're charging is the cost that we think it costs us to actually do the business. So at some point in, in a relatively near, if you, probably a year's cycle, one would have a reasonable expectation that if you're being paid for the actual cost of the labor of the material, then you should start to catch up to where you need to be. And, and that, and that is about the best guesstimates that we can have.
Good evening.
Good evening. I, I wanted to add to the discussion.
Would you state who you are, please?
Excuse me, Jeff Wakefield, Muni Financial. There are hardware components to this fee and there are annual maintenance components as well. So I think to answer the question, I, I think there will be an ongoing, I, I think the fee will be ongoing and the costs that we're experiencing, these technology costs will be raised annually. Some of them are ma, annual maintenance costs that could go on literally forever. Some of them are hardware one-time costs, but we're projecting a useful life for perhaps ten years. So this calculation would pay for that cost on an annual basis for the projected life, which would be ten years. However, in ten years from now, or eleven years from now, there might be another need for another system, so.
Mr. Wakefield, if I, if I can interject, may, maybe to directly address Councilwoman Fote's question, with respect to the fees that are currently charged across the board for building, planning, engineering, is it a true statement that once the fees go into effect, the current subsidy that the general fund is subsidizing those services should end because you are now going to be collecting close to a hundred percent, if not a hundred percent, of the actual city's cost for providing those services?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
So as Mr. Reddy said, that within a year's time, we should see full cost recovery of our costs because now the fees will truly reflect the costs the city incurs for providing those services that the development community receives.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Fote.
With respect to redoing the study every three years, what was the cost of this study? And would we have to start a whole and new study or can somehow it be updated?
The cost of the study was approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in terms of whether it can be just simply updated or we have to go through another elaborate exercise of generating cost information. I believe I would defer that to Mr. Wakefield. He has probably more familiarity with updating cost of service or cost allocation plans. It's been my experience, however, that after many years, you tend to have to go out and start pretty much with raw data so you can make sure that you update it to reflect true costs and so you're capturing all the necessary information to show what your true cost of the services that are being provided.
Can we get a legal on that, please?
When you update, it's not required that you would necessarily do a full-blown study. However, the issue has to do with how out-of-date your data is. And in, obviously, the full-blown study is more expensive. And in that regard, I know there was the request to look at that every three years, but if you're going to do a full-blown study, I don't know whether five years might be a more agreeable time period because of the expense of doing a full study versus the CPI adjustment, which is obviously relatively easy to do.
Mr. Kimby.
I thank you for recognizing me out of order. The, if you keep track on a regular basis of the actual time it takes to do a job, and in three years, all you have to do is update, it's not a big deal. The, the big reason that, that you have a fee increase is, is it stays level or goes up slightly or whatever the case would be. And then all of a sudden, reality kicks in, i.e., you find out exactly what it costs you. The problem with an automatic escalator every year, it, the costs don't automatically escalate every year because you have different machinery changes and time changes and there's, they do things today in, in their work in hours that it used to take them weeks for computers and things like that and the processes. So the actual cost of the city sometimes goes down and, because things get better. And that's why we're saying it, if you keep track of the actual time it takes to do things, then it's pretty easy to do an update. And I think Jeff will pretty much agree with me on that because that's the figures. That's what's contained in here now is the figures. The only thing is, they're guesses. We'd like them to be for real. And thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you. Mr. Pugnay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I am in full support of the staff recommendation with some minor changes. For five months now, this has been discussed, it's been hammered through, it's been hammered through at study sessions. In my mind, staff is looking forward, they're thinking of the fees and ahead. I am at this point going to make a, a motion to approve the resolution and implement the fee schedule with the following adjustments. I can't remember now, but Troy, in the very beginning, you mentioned there were one or two on the page that we were going to...
Section four under use of fee revenues, is that what you're referring to?
I think that, that was, yes. The second item, in working with the BIA, that the two funds would be restricted as, as you mentioned. The motion will also have the technology fee at a dollar thirty. And on the, the issue of the review process, we, someone had mentioned at one point, CPI adjustments maybe up until the fifth year where we do a review. So I'm not sure we have all that, but...
I think I have most of it. The, the current resolution does provide for a CPI, CPI adjustment annually, but we can add a paragraph or a sentence in there that says that in the fifth year, we'll do a updated study or a new study, what have you, to reflect the discussion that we've had here tonight. And I think with that and then the language relative to the technology fee and the general plan maintenance fee, I think those are the areas that are covered.
I commend the staff and I commend the BIA. And I, that is my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you have a second? I have a question. In the fee process, if a person wants to appeal, do we have a hardship application?
The clerk says we do not, however, there is a provision that they can come to council and ask for a, a waiver of the fee.
All right, I think that if, needs to state, state that I think clearly, or we need to have an official process in place when people can't afford and perhaps criteria to determine whether or not it's a true hardship.
Actually, the, unless the city attorney wants to interject here, but the fee resolution does provide for a fee adjustment and waiver process that follows Government Code Section sixty-six zero-two-zero, which allows for a protest procedure. So I believe it's pretty well laid out here for this particular type of fee or fees. If the city attorney wants to weigh in on another type of process, certainly I'd be welcome to hear that.
Do they have to pay the money to appeal, though, to do that?
This does not require a filing of a fee for appeal. This simply requires that they file a protest within a specified period of time.
Okay.
Perhaps what we should do is, this has been a long time coming. I think if you went ahead with this, we could come back and report specifically on how that code, how that statutory process would work. Because I'm not sure whether you're really thinking of, of a protest process or more of a hardship process with criteria.
Right.
So we, we can separately report back and give you some options and then if you want to amend it to deal with that, you can do that at that time.
Okay.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, this is just a curiosity question, but I was just noticing, I, I'm glad we kept all the fees that we, that really refer to just the, the general citizen, like the, the garage sale fees at the same, but I'm noticing that we've got an RV permit fee that went from eighty dollars to four hundred and sixty dollars. I mean, that's a, a huge jump.
I think this needs to...
I mean, I was just curious as to why.
Well, I'll either defer to Doug or Jeff, but I think it's because of the cost of the service and issuing that permit, that's what that fee is based upon.
That's true.
I mean, if, you know, in taking a look at that permit, we've, we've been through several in the last few months. We had fresh information as to the amount of time we went in and spent on those and we, on those particular permits, several of them, we ended up having to referee discussions between neighbors and it meant multiple times out in the field. So we had pretty good data. Now, you know, again, that fee is not just the pure hours that the planner put in on it, it's also the administrative cost of the, the overall sys, city that adds up to it to get to the four hundred dollar mark. That is one that affects single-family homeowners primarily. If the council wanted to adjust that one down, you certainly could tonight. It, it's not going to affect the, the budget much. We probably do less than five RV permits a year.
I don't have any intention of going through this fee by fee and making decisions. I just was curious.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
It passes three to one.
Mr. Mayor, if we could move to number seventeen, the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall Presentation?
Yes.
This is just a waiver of fees of, for the wall to be present in the city of Palm Springs. This was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission and if you need additional information, Mr. Mike will is here in the audience and he can address those questions.
Council, what is your pleasure? I don't know if we need a staff report on this.
I'll move the motion.
And I'll second it. Just like to say a special thank you to the Rotary Clubs of Palm Springs for bringing this wall to us and for our retired Captain Boswell for his work and working with us in security. And I'm sure the community will certainly enjoy having the Vietnam wall, a moving wall here in the city of Palm Springs. As a matter of fact, this is the only place that it's going to be exhibited. Is it in the west or is it just in the state of California? Southern California, state, it is state, I thought so. Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, number twenty-three, the Convention Center Expansion Phase Two Project. We have several people from the project that are here, not the least of which is Al Smoot, our former Assistant City Manager, who is the lead project director on this program. I would just like to note one thing. The bids on this portion of the contr, of the Convention Center Expansion were opened yesterday. We've been through this process before with the parking structure where we were on such a tight timeframe. We had to be very creative and keep the ball rolling and make this thing, to make this thing get done on time. This is another scenario. We briefed council several times in previous meetings. You certainly are aware of this process, but because it's so compact, Al Smoot will walk you through the bids yesterday and then we'll be ready to take any questions you might have. Thank you. Al?
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's indeed a pleasure to be here tonight to report to you that so far, so good. We are keeping our fingers crossed. We're about one-third of the way in and we are going to report that there is some savings out there right now. However, we don't want you to go spend that money because we're probably going to spend it for you next Wednesday when the rest of the bids come out. We did take bids yesterday in several categories and they range all the way from demolition through electrical. Some of the bids were under, some of the bids were over. When you average it all up, this report shows a million one under budget. I do need to ask you, however, tonight, that trade number nine, which is masonry and stone, which would be resolution on page twenty-three F, that you do not take action on that. We've had some problems with the contract and we've got to, with the bids, we've got to work through that yet. That would still leave us somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars worth of savings to carry into next week. We are working through on a couple of other bids that we took yesterday that we're not recommending today that also would spend some of that. So we hope we will get to a point to where we're able to bring you a total project next week. The reason we're asking you to move some of these tonight, and by the way, all of these are being approved subject to your approval of bond documents, which you will be doing on April seventh. So if something does happen in the process between now and then, things can be reversed. The particular items that are before you are represented in the form of resolutions for each one of them tonight. And we're, as I say, we're pretty pleased at this point. Just an observation, two of the items which were substantially over were trades that had to do with steel. And I've been reporting to you almost weekly about what's happening in steel and as fast as we report it goes up. And if you look at even the HVAC number twenty, the trade twenty-two, you'll see that that's about eleven percent above the estimate. You start figuring in there that there, about thirty percent of that entire contract is steel pipe that goes inside of the building and the ducting that's there. You look at the other item in the form of the, the concrete and concrete reinforcing, that again, was over about eleven percent. Again, there's a ton of steel inside of that. So it's, it's looking like most of our bids that have to do with steel are going to be above what we have estimated. Unfortunately, we have seven million dollars worth of steel bids coming in next week, so we're hoping they're not eleven percent over. With that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions for you and the rest of the teams here if you need them.
Ms. Fote?
Mr. Smuth, the one bid on here that, that was really amazing to me is how could we estimate the demolition costing a million dollars and the bid come in at three hundred and sixty-nine thousand? Like, we have the bigger variance.
Well, we had two bids on that. One of them was at nine hundred and somewhat thousand dollars was the other bid that we received. The one thing that we, we could not estimate in there was the salvage value of the steel that will come out of there because in most cases, a demolition contractor does not share that with the, the owner. In this case, we believe that American Demolition, which is a top-rate firm, really know what they're doing, wants the work and are going to be, are going to be sharing that salvage value of the steel that comes out of that building with us. And that's why we believe we have such a low bid. We think it's a solid bid, we, we think they know what they're doing and, so we're, we're happy with it.
It's a bigger, a bigger wrecking ball.
They have a very big truck, hopefully, or something.
I never get these reductions when I build something.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pugnay.
No, I would just like to commend, commend staff at this point. This has been a very contentious issue, obviously, in the bidding process and we're nervous about it. Obviously, many of these, you... Obviously, many of these, you have been working with some of these vendors to get bids in, and get them in line, and get them down, so I think for right now, this is a very good start. Certainly, the, the steel issue is the big one, but yeah, I just want to commend staff, I think we're on the right track here, so...
Thank you. Then, we want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve all except number nine?
Which is F, 23F, which is what's drawn.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second by Mr. McCullough. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it passes unanimously, 4-0.
I think we're done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
There's one final issue for tonight's meeting, that's number 27, White Party 15, if we may?
Yes, please.
Members of council, this is requesting that there's a suspension of certain regulatory, regulatory ordinances that the city has for this event. Doug Evans is prepared to give a report on the particulars from the planning side, not the least of which, he will explain that several of the events that were potentially noisier events in years past will not be a part of this year's event. And also, the police chief is here to answer any questions you may have with regard to, to that enforcement aspect. So, if, would you like a staff, complete staff report, or is it just open to questions at this point?
Are there any questions?
Of staff?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. My question is, because this so irritated me last year, that as I'm reading through this, I just want to know a little bit more about the dance ordinance, as I recall reading about that last year, was it 1938, or whatever it was, and, and if it is outdated, perhaps it's time to eliminate it.
Yeah, after 2:00 AM, or something.
Well, yeah, yeah, so that's an explanation.
Could you explain the dance?
We have an ordinance that says that if you dance after a certain hour, you can't dance after a certain hour in the city of Palm Springs. It doesn't matter.
Really?
Holy dance or not, you can't do it.
That's correct.
Yes.
Can't dance, I didn't look it up against, again this year, I started an ordinance amendment right after last year's event, and got bogged down with current planning activity. I think it's after 2:00 AM to a certain period, municipal code says you can't dance.
So, my question is, how do I make a recommendation, that we take a look at it?
We're going to suspend the, suspend the ordinance for this event, and what we're, we will do is, we'll queue it up, and try to fix that code.
Thank you.
Good news, it's, it's municipal code, so it's pretty simple to fix.
Great, thanks, Doug.
And will we be able to change it before?
No, we don't have to worry about it, but we will change, change it ultimately. Are there any other questions? Then, counsel, what is your pleasure?
I'll move the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, say a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Roll call.
Ms. Fote?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, it passes unanimously.
Mine's an enthusiastically "aye," since it's the end of the meeting.
So, you'll want to adjourn this meeting to next Wednesday for the continuation of the items that you did not discuss tonight, and then you'll have the special call for the Convention Center items also.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And our next regular meeting will be on April the 7th, and our next regular study session will be March 28th, and closed session will begin at 5:00 PM. And the next joint meeting with the tribal council, is that still accurate?
No, that's going to be April 12th, I believe it is. It's Monday, April the 12th, that, if I have the...
Okay, that's, it says, it says April the 12th?
Yeah, that's correct.
6:00 PM, at the Spa Hotel, so that is accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, all righty. Then, we will call this meeting adjourned.